Alright, everybody who's got a clicker, have you tested the clicker? Okay, so if you hold the clicker in your hand and you press the green button for a moment, it should show a one, and it should show to the left of the one, there should be a little box that says okay. Alright, hold it up and press it again. It's mine said A first, but I held it a little longer than it said okay. One and okay. Well, if you press the red button, you're getting a two, and if you press the green, you're getting a one. And this, this is scrolling, so there are 23 pages, but somewhere along here, you would see the number on the back. So if you are not having that luck with the one and the okay, if you've tried it a few times, where are they supposed to go?
Uh, just, yeah, go back and see if they can filter Nicole first, and then we'll get a new one if their device doesn't work.
Okay, alright, Nicole, could you wave your hand, please? Okay. Okay, so, if your number's blue... I put my phone on, um, I, I put my phone on airplane mode, because last year, people kept texting me during the meeting. I was like, don't do them. Okay, we're gonna get started. Can people hear me? I feel like I'm so far from the... Oh, yeah. Right, right corner?
Uh, it was the one that I, I recommended, yeah, just switching to an L.
Alright, good evening, Hopkinton. I am your town moderator, Ellen Rutter, and we are now calling the 2024 Annual Town Meeting to order. Please join me in welcoming Troop 11 as they open our annual town meeting and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Color guard, attention. Audience, please rise. Please remove any head coverings, and for those not in uniform, please place your right, your right hand over your heart. Color guard, advance. Would you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard, post the flag of the United States of America. Color guard, post the flag of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Color guard, honor your colors. Color guard, dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie, and thank you, Troop 11. As we get started, I'd like to take a moment of silence in recognition of those who worked for or volunteered with the town and passed away since our last town meeting. I'd also like to extend my appreciation for those who, people who retired from town rolls over the past year. So one of the fun things that happens every year is that there are a bunch of new people who come to town meeting for the first time. So with that in mind, I'm going to give a little overview of town meeting to make sure everybody is following what's happening. As you came into the auditorium tonight, you could or should have picked up a packet, and that is the warrant and the motions, and we will refer to it throughout the meeting tonight. Our quorum is set at 1% of registered voters. For this year and the meeting, it is 131. We can see that we have more than that tonight, so that's great. For each article, I will announce what vote is required. So sometimes it's a simple majority, sometimes it's two-thirds, and then we'll announce the tally after each vote. For those of you who've been here before and you've seen me scribbling and adding, I don't have to do that this year. We've got this, and it's gonna be great and go faster. It looks like we have 281 clickers out there, which is super. The first order of business tonight is to appoint a deputy town moderator. This role will help in general with town meeting, and if I need to take a quick break, they will step in for me. I nominate our town clerk, Connor Deegan. Is there a second? All in, oh, do I say, can I say I, or do you want me to vote? Alright, let's do a test with our clickers. Everyone, okay, Nicole, if you can, if you can get this, it's a good practice, I think. Okay, so if you want to vote for Connor, press the green button. If you want Connor not to be the deputy moderator, press the red button. And if you don't want to vote at all, don't press any button. Let's go. Well, it looks like, it looks like most everybody has voted, because we have 281 votes. Could you do a, close the poll, Nicole, please, and let us know? Okay, Connor, there we go. Nice test of the clicker. Yes, there are 255 said yes, 26 said no. Oh, not yet. I will, okay, alright. So whether it's your first, your 10th, or even your 25th town meeting, we appreciate that you are engaged in this important civic activity. I'd like to remind everyone that town meeting is the first part of our two-part spring town activity. On May 20th, which is a Monday, we will cast our votes on ballot questions that we approve here at town meeting, along with elect people to fill some open seats on town committees and boards. I'd like to welcome our registered voters. If you're a registered voter in Hopkinton, you should have gotten a clicker. If you didn't for some reason, please go back and see Nicole. I also am welcoming our townspeople who are not registered voters. I believe there is a special section for you to sit in this evening. Town employees and others who are part of this meeting process should be sitting in this area to my right, stage right. Other visitors who are also visiting but not residents, you should have a special pass, and you should also be sitting in this section. For the media, you have a dedicated row there, I see you, John, and anyone else in the media can be right here in the front. Please do stay seated unless you're stepping out for a break or approaching the mic to speak. I do not plan to take any formal breaks during this meeting, so I will hand off to Connor when I need to take a break, and, and you can step out when you need to take one. I know there's been some questions about the clickers. Your device has a number on the back. Only you know what that number is. We did not track them when we gave them to you. Voting will be open for a few minutes, or one minute after each article. You can vote just one time. Once you press a button, you must vote yes or no. So if you don't want to vote for some reason, if you want to abstain, don't press any button. Water is allowed in the auditorium. Other drinks, food, and smoking, and other forms of tobacco use are not permitted in this hall. And please turn off or, or mute any devices you may have with you. I'd like to go over the meeting flow. So as each article comes up, I will introduce the article, then I will invite the sponsor to make a motion, and then I will ask board chairs to share their committee recommendations. The article's sponsor may then make a presentation. We have limited most major presentations to eight minutes. There is one school presentation that I know is going to be about 15 minutes. So after the presentation has concluded, we open the floor to questions. There are two mics on either side of these aisles. Please approach the mic and wait for me to recognize you. As you approach the mic, you should state your name and your address. Just a reminder, you must be a Hopkinton registered voter to speak at the mic. When you approach the mic, please say if you are in support of or against the article, and then you can have up to two minutes to, to share your thoughts or ask a question. Our colleague here, Megan, has this great timer, so we all can see that people have their two minutes and wrap up in time to give other people their opportunity to speak. Please wrap up at two minutes. I will remind you as you're getting close. Be clear in your position and get to your point quickly. If you have questions about the, the presentation you've just seen, the protocol is that you ask them through me. So you say, "Through you, Madam Moderator, I'd like to understand something," and then I can help direct that question to the person who can best answer it. The reason we do that is that this is not a debate. Please return to your seat at the conclusion of your two minutes. You may approach the mic a second time if everyone has had an opportunity to speak, and you need to be bringing something new. Don't just come back and say the same thing again. No resident may speak more than twice on any article. Often, the best argument is the most concise one. So once the discussion is over, we'll vote on the article. We will have, I would say about a minute, maybe two, to cast your vote using your electronic clicker. The tally is visible on the screen in terms of how many people have voted. As we get close to the end, then we'll put the, the result, and we'll say out loud where we landed, and then move on to the next article. If at any time during the evening, you think your clicker's giving you trouble, please go to that back corner where Nicole is sitting, and, and she can help you out. If you have an amendment to propose, I believe you need to first go to the back to Josh, is that right? To Josh, he's got his hand up. And then after you give him the, the information, you'll bring it to me, and we'll talk it over here with counsel and, and advise from there. So that everyone is aware, the town is allowing one voter to participate remotely in this meeting pursuant to an accommodation request under the Americans with Disabilities Act. The ADA states that municipalities must make reasonable modifications to policies, practices, and procedures related to town meeting when the modifications are necessary to provide equal access to individuals with disabilities, unless the town can demonstrate that making the modifications would fundamentally alter the nature of the town meeting. The ADA is a federal law that preamps any state laws to the contrary, including those that would otherwise require in-person attendance at town meeting. In this case, the Massachusetts Office on Disability has advised the town that the requested accommodations are necessary for equal access to the individual, and do not alter the nature of the meeting. As we get started, I would like to acknowledge all of the people, including people who are here tonight, and also those who aren't, who are making this meeting possible. So thank you to so many of you for being here to make it come together. I'd also like to take a moment to remind you that we are neighbors before, and we will be neighbors again after town meeting. Let's maintain civility. Let's keep open minds. Contrary opinions strengthen our discourse. Debate can enrich us, and discussion will result in the best course of action for Hopkinton. I now call on Town Clerk Connor Deegan for the call and return of the warrant.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Greetings to the constables of the town of Hopkinton in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You are hereby required to notify and warn all inhabitants of the town of Hopkinton qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs of the annual town meeting warrant this day, Monday, May 6, 2024. Hear of and fail not, and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the clerk of said town of Hopkinton at the time and place aforementioned, given under our hands this sixth day of May, 2024.
I now call on the Chair of the Select Board, Maryel Kramer, on customary measures relating to the time of this meeting.
Madam Moderator, I move that we conclude the session of the town meeting tonight after discussing the article that brings us closest to 11:00 PM.
Pardon me? Um, is the board making the motion, or are you making it? Okay, then we don't need a second. Let's do this again and practice our voting. Everybody who agrees that we should wrap up around 11:00 PM when we finish... Okay, I got the thumbs up, we can do that. Okay, so we'll wrap up around 11:00 PM as we finish the article that we're talking about. So if you agree that you want to wrap up around 11, you will press your green button. If you want to wrap up some other time, pass, press the red button, and we should be able to do this in about a minute. Okay, so we know that we have about 300 people here now, and we're at, voting at 295. So if you want to vote and you just haven't had a chance, please do, and then we'll show the calculation. Alright, we're at 300. Great, Nicole, can you show us the results? Close the vote, please. Okay, 265 people have voted that we will end around 11:00 PM, so we will do that. 37 voted no. Thank you. Okay. With regard to the ordering of the articles, now is the one time during the meeting we will entertain a request to rearrange. Does anyone have a request to change the order? Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. Okay, so we actually are gonna move to the consent agenda. I think I sent a couple slides, and we can get started. So I'd like to propose that we use a consent agenda to streamline consideration of a number of articles tonight. If we can go to the next slide. So a consent agenda allows us to take one single vote to pass a group of non-controversial items, that is, articles that all of us are going to most likely agree on. So in some cases, work on a particular article is incomplete, and the sponsors themselves have asked for a vote of no action. There's some other articles where the action is non-controversial, and we see, we don't expect there to be a debate. So the way that we do this is I'm going to read just the name of each article, and then I'm gonna request if there is anyone who has a question or wants there to be a debate. If anyone has a question or wants there to be a debate, please come up to the mic, and if it's a quick question, we may see if we can answer it satisfactorily in a quick way. If not, if, if we need to have a debate, what we'll just do is we'll just pull that article back into the warrant in the, in the order that it, it currently appears. So this is how we'll go, starting with Article 2. Article 2, Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Does anyone have something about that? No, okay. Article 4, Rescind Authorized But Unissued Debt. Okay, Article 5, Excess Bond Premium. Article 10, Chapter 90, Highway Funds. Article 11, Transfer to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Article 12, Transfer to the General Stabilization Fund. Article 13, Transfer to the Capital Expense Stabilization Fund. Are you approaching the mic? No, okay, I'm sorry. Article 14, Transfer to the, did I just say that one? No. Transfer to the School Special Education Reserve Fund. Okay, shall I say? Alright, so we're adding, we're proposing to add one, which is Article 28. Okay, it's about buying a water, a truck for the... Okay, it's about buying a water, a truck for the water department, and they have asked us to change it to no action. The sponsor asked us to change it to no action, so we'd like to put it in here. Okay. Eighteen? Okay, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'll add it in a second. Okay, Article 34, Toxic Chemicals Testing. Sorry, were you, were you about something, about 34 or something else? Thirty-four? Okay. Yes. Can we turn the mic on for this gentleman? Can you please hear your name and address?
Hi, Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street. I'd like to propose an amendment to this one, so I'd like it to not be in the consent agenda, please.
Okay, so do you have your amend, amendment prepared?
Yeah, I don't think it's enough money. I think it should be $25,000 to $30,000. And I think Peter Legoy, if he's here, could speak to this.
Okay, so, so if, if, if you'd like it to pull it.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to move to pull it out of the consent agenda so we can discuss it.
Okay, and that is 34. Okay, so in the meantime, can you work with the folks in the back to make sure that your amendment is getting?
Yeah, thank you.
Set up? Okay, yes. Can we have this mic on, please? Nope. Try again. Nope. There's a switch, I think. Try again. Why don't you come to this mic? Sorry, we'll fix it.
Hello?
There you go.
Jeff Rowland, Chair of the Sustainable Green Committee. I just wanted to clarify.
What is your address, please?
14 Old Farm Road.
Thank you.
But speak on behalf of the committee. The Sustainable Green Committee has recommended no action on this Article 34. I just wanted to be clear about that after rounds of internal feedback.
Okay, so we're moving it off. Okay, okay. Article 45, so just so everyone's clear, Article 34, we moved off the consent agenda. Article 45, Accept the Gift of Land, the Whisper Ridge subdivision. Article 46, Accept the Gift of Land, Connolly Farms subdivision. Article 47, Accept the Gift of Land, Elmwood III subdivision. Yes, sir.
Mike Shepard, 11 Hill Street. I'd like the opportunity to speak to Article 47, if I may.
Do you, do you have a question or a comment or?
I have both questions and comments.
If you have both questions and comments, I'm thinking we should move it off. What do you think? Let's move it on to the, keep it on the, the warrant.
Move off the consent agenda.
Yes, let's do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, 47. So we just moved 47 back on to the, the warrant. Yep. Article 50, Transfer the Care, Custody, and Control of Echo Trail. Okay, now, we also have a late-breaking ad, so in addition to 28, which was the water truck. The school committee had a vote earlier this evening, and Article 8, it's 18. Can someone confirm that I'm saying it right? Okay, just, okay. Article 18, which was an HVAC article for $700,000, they have now recommended no action, and they, so I'd like to put that on the consent agenda as well. So I will be adding 28, the water truck, and 18, the school HVAC. Yep.
21.
Sorry, man. Yeah, thanks. We'll, we'll get that fixed.
Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. I'd like to understand why we're not doing the HVAC work. I'm the Chair of the Capital Improvement Committee. That was specifically added to our agenda last week at the request of Town Infrastructure. We specifically discussed that that HVAC system hadn't hit the end of its usable life, and there was concerns about both lead time and actual replacement. So I'm just concerned, and I'd like to understand more about the late change. I'd also just offer some general feedback. This is really confusing. If you want to do it this way in the future, I would strongly request that you group them on the warrant that way. It's a lot to ask of us to track it in real time.
Thank you, that's good feedback. No, we're not, we're not going to take you, we're going to pull it back. Okay, so I'm going to put, I'm going to keep 18 on, on the warrant. We can't have a presentation if we're trying to move quickly on these things. Yeah, I'm removing 18 from the consent agenda. So the way the consent agenda is formed is that the select board makes, puts a warrant together, and then I went through the articles to make the proposals, so we're going to have to come up with an idea of how we can, we can do this in a better way going forward. Yeah, can I, can I entertain someone asking? Yeah, yes.
Madam Moderator.
Can you announce your name, please?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ann Matina, 40 Eastview Road. Two of the articles were withdrawn by their, recommended no action by their sponsors and were removed, but Article 34, the sponsor said no action, but we put it back in. Can we do that without these sustainable greens? Should it still be discussed, is the question?
Yeah, so it's on the warrant, and my, the advice I did get here was that a person can ask something to be discussed even if the committee says no action. So thank you for clarifying, and we had something like this last year happen, actually. Okay, so I'm, I'm glad that we've got this. So we have these articles. We are taking 34 and 47 and putting them back on to the warrant that we will discuss in the order that, that they are numbered. We added the water truck, which is 28. And now we are going to vote. So when you vote, what you're voting for is, do you agree with all of the direction on each one of these articles? Some of them are no action and some of them are action. Yes, John?
Yes, John Coutina, 1 David Joseph Road.
I don't know, hold on, I want to make sure people can hear you. Can people hear him?
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry.
Madam Moderator, I was just wondering, you know, we're, we, we almost had one in here that, on a consent agenda, and consent agendas are very important, but we almost had one in here for $700,000. And so what I'm wondering is, is there any way now that we have, we're using the clickers and we have computers, is there any way we can have a running total? We, we now, just at, at special town meeting, we just, we just okayed about $1,000 per average home. Could we have a running total of what the, what taxes might be going up on an average home each time we vote for a $500,000 here, $200,000 here, $150,000 there? You know, just so that we know that when we leave here that our taxes are going up $2,500 in average home, whatever it is, just so we know as, you know, as we're going through. I, I don't know if it's technically possible, but I figured I'd ask.
I don't know, and that's an interesting question. I don't think it's part of the consent agenda, so if you don't mind, I'm going to table that. So right now, what we're doing is voting on the consent agenda. I, I know that there are a number of people who maybe haven't been here or aren't familiar, so before we vote, is there anyone who's just trying to make sure they understand what your vote is meaning about voting on this consent agenda?
Madam Moderator, 215 Pond Street, Peter Thomas, 34, is not on the consent agenda, correct? It has been removed.
Correct, and actually, I wonder, is it possible, I don't know if you guys can edit back there, but it, I mean, I could put my hand on here. But, but I think it could be a little confusing for people if they're voting, and so, if I put a sharpie, that would be bad, but. Okay, but I made the motion, so I don't need to get a second because I'm the. Okay, okay. So is it possible back there to get 34 and 47? Oh, you're typing it, okay, that, that's good because it'll take just a moment. All right, so I've just had a little bit of clarification here. We need somebody to make a motion to use the consent agenda. I think I was overly ambitious making the motion myself, so moved, okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so in just, so let's all vote, actually, we can do this while you're working on this. Nicole, we're going to vote whether we're going to use a consent agenda, and I'm assuming that's a simple majority. Voting is open, we need a simple majority. If you want to do the consent agenda, plus, press the green button. If you don't, press the red button. So we need it to have, so is it hard for them to make the change on the thing up there? Can I just put a line through? Oh, no, because the number still shows. Okay. Okay, we're at 325. If you haven't voted, please vote quickly. Let's close the voting. There you go. Okay, so we needed a simple majority to use a consent agenda at 285 for yes and 44 no. We are moving forward with the consent agenda. 285. Okay, we're going to put back the consent agenda proposal to make sure we're all know what we're voting for.
Can you read through them for everybody?
What's that?
Can you re-read the numbers for everybody?
Article 2, Article 4, Article 5, Article 10, Article 11, Article 12, Article 13, Article 14, Article 28, Article 45, Article 46, Article 50. We'll take a motion to take a consent agenda on those articles. I think I heard a second, sorry. Oh, okay, Muriel Kramer made the, you, you made the motion? And who made the second? Erphon made the second? Okay, so if everybody's ready, if you are voting for this consent agenda, the voting is open, please press the, it's open now, great. Please press the green button for yes and the red button for no, and we'll be open for just a minute. Sorry? Yeah, you, if you, if you vote yes, you are voting as a consent agenda for how the article is written. Some of them are no action, and, and then the other ones specify the action, so for, yeah, the way they've been written in the, in the motions and warrant, that's what you're voting for.
The motion's wrong. The, the motion says I move that we vote to approve the articles listed on the consent agenda, but several of them are votes for no action. So that motion is incorrect.
Yeah, it, it, sorry. I'll correct it. So what we're doing is we're, we are voting yes either on the action or yes on the no action. So the yes mo, if you vote yes, you are indeed voting yes on e.
So point of order with the electronic voting, that is not what that motion says that we are being asked to vote on.
Another try? I don't know, so is that, pardon me? Okay, so this is not written correctly, so what do we need to do? Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm going to let town clerk Connor Deegan speak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. With your permission, we'll just close the vote. We'll just update the language very quickly. The, just to clarify, the motion that is being recognized right now is to vote to approve the action written in the warrant, articles, and motions document. If the warrant says that a yes vote means no action, then that is what the consent agenda is doing.
So what are the words that should be in the motion that someone makes? What's that? Okay, so the language would be that a person would make a motion to approve the recommended action on each of the articles on the consent agenda. Is there somebody that will make that motion?
Madam Moderator.
Point of border. Just a minute, yes, Ken?
On, on Article 28, are we voting for the expenditure money or are we voting for no action?
We're voting for no action because they changed their recommendation this, earlier today.
That is not what the piece of paper that we have says. I think we ought to remove Article 28 off the consent agenda.
Sorry, yes, thank you.
145 Ash Street.
Except no action on Article 28, okay. Okay, so do we tell some, do we say that to somebody? Okay, all right, so we've just gotten clarification from counsel what this needs to say, and we will type it so it's up here so everyone is very clear.
I'm just going to get on it too. It takes about 15 seconds for it to switch over since it's being live.
Okay, so the, the wording is being updated and the slide will come up that will outline that when we vote yes for the consent agenda, it'll be for how each of the articles is written in the warrant and motions except for Article 28. Okay, so this is a language that we are So this is a language that we are looking for someone to make a motion regarding the consent agenda as laid out on this slide.
Madam Moderator, I move the motion to approve the recommended action on the articles in the consent agenda, except for article twenty-eight, for which I move the town to take no action.
Okay, can you state your name and your address, please?
Oh, I sure can. Muriel Kramer, thirty-nine North Street.
Thank you. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think that was, um, Erfan. What is your address?
Two eleven Winter Street.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, we are gonna switch to voting now, and if you vote yes, you're voting for the articles as written, except for twenty-eight, on which we're voting no action. So your yes vote will be those two things. Please open the vote. Thank you. Okay. So we're about at three eighteen, and I think we gave out about three hundred and twenty-five clickers or so. So, um, if you haven't voted and you want to, please click. Yep. Okay. Let's end the voting, please. Close the vote? Okay. So yes is two ninety-two. We have twenty-eight, oh, sorry, thirty-eight, no. So the cut... Okay. So I have to also announce the home vote, so it is thirty-nine, no. Three hundred and ninety-two, yes. The consent agenda carries, and so we'll, now we'll move on to the, the warrant articles and motions in the order. So for article one, looking to you, to the select board.
We move that the town hear the reports of town officers, boards, and committees.
Okay. Um, I'm, I think I heard that the permanent building committee wanted to do a presentation. Is there anyone from that group here? All right. Is there any other committee chair who has a presentation that they were expecting to give tonight? Okay. Okay. So if there are no questions, are there any questions? Okay, if there are no questions, we'll move on to a vote to accept town reports. Your, um, a yes vote means that we're accepting the town reports. A no vote means we are not, and we need a simple majority. Nicole, can you open the voting, please? Thank you. Okay. So I know there are about, there may be twenty-five or thirty more, um, clickers still out there. So if you have a clicker and you wanted to vote on this, please get your vote in, so I can close the, the vote and move on. Yes, and I don't know... Yeah, do you have a point of order, because, um, otherwise we're in the middle of a vote. Okay, you're saying point of order. Do you mind coming to this mic, or you can come to the one right here? I'm, I don't know, sorry about that. Yeah, do you mind introducing yourself, please?
Madam Moderator, Ed Harrow, Eight Spring Lane. I'm wondering on these votes that are like not controversial, if we could just have a yea or nay, we'd be all done by now.
Thank you. Thank you, good idea. Um, can, can we close this vote? Thank you. All right. What is the home vote? Okay. We haven't, we haven't received the home vote, but we'll call it at yes at three oh four, and no at twenty-three. All right. Moving on to article three, the sponsor is, um, the town manager, and it is unpaid bills from prior fiscal years. Just a reminder that article two was part of the consent agenda. Is that you? Is that you? Okay.
Article three, unpaid bills from prior fiscal years. We move the motion as printed in the warrant, articles, and motions document.
Okay. And the select board?
We recommend approval.
Um, is there someone here from appropriation committee?
Yep, an appropriation committee recommends approval. If I can discuss the, explain the article?
Sure.
So these are just unpaid bills, um, from previous years that were not paid, and they came to light. So the total is fifteen thousand, five hundred, ninety-four dollars and four cents.
Are there any, are there any questions? All right. So this one needs a four-fifth vote? Okay. Yeah, it's a four-fifth. All right. So I'm, I'm gonna follow that suggestion. Um, since I didn't see any questions, I'm gonna hazard an effort at just doing a, a voice vote. If we get a four-fifth majority, then we can keep moving. So all in favor of approving the... Well, basically, if, if it, if it's unanimous, then we'll, we'll call it, and if it's not, we'll, we'll go back to the clicker. What's that? Yeah. Or, did someone ask for this to scroll up? Okay. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Okay. I'm gonna call that that was four-fifths, and I'm gonna do, call a voice vote that it passes. Okay. Article four was part of the consent agenda. A five was consent agenda as well. Um, article six, setting the salary of elected officials. It looks like the sponsor's the select board.
I believe appropriations makes the motion, though.
Okay.
Appropriation committee makes the motion. So this is set the, article six is set the salary of elected officials. We move that motion as printed in warrant, articles, and motions document.
Select board recommends approval.
Appropriation committee recommends approval. Essentially, uh, by Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-one, section one oh eight, requires town meeting to set the salary and compensation of all elected officials who are paid. The only such elected official in Hopkinton is the town clerk. Article four proposes, proposes, whoops, article six proposes to set the salary at eighty-five thousand, eight hundred, eighty-two dollars, a five percent increase above last year's salary level.
Okay. Are there any, any questions, comments? Okay, seeing that there none, um, and that this is a simple majority, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna try with a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Okay. Voice vote carries. All right. Article seven. The fiscal twenty twenty-five operating budget. I know we have a number of, of presentations on this one.
Article seven, fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget. Uh, we moved that the, we moved the motion as printed in the warrant, articles, and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and citizens of Hopkinton. The appropriation committee is pleased to present the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget for your consideration. Article seven covers general municipal operations, including the schools, town departments, and debt payments on general town projects. It als, it also authorizes the expenditure of user fees that will raise, in the, that will be raised in the water and sewer enterprises, and it would authorize the administrative expenses and debt payments to support the dedicated community preservation fund. New capital articles that will be proposed from fun, for funding from existing resources or from new borrowing are covered in later articles. In preparation for today's annual meeting, the appropriation committee has developed a comprehensive report covering the budget and financial articles, with a lot of support from town departments, as well as boards, committees, and commissions. That report has been posted online and is provided in your packet today. One of the town's core financial principles is to budget in a cautious and prudent way, which means taking a pessimistic view of potential revenue coming in, while also trying to make sure that budgets are able to absorb inflationary cost increases, which are difficult to predict in periods of higher inflation. The review process paid close attention to and carefully evaluated the targeted service level increases that have been included in this budget, which are limited to the Hopkinton Public Schools. Through a combination of cost containment and some good news on estimated revenues, the proposal before today's town meeting, if approved, will deliver a balanced budget, one that sustains fiscal year twenty twenty-four level services across departments, that pays for contractual and other inflationary cost increases, and includes capital spending to renew town facilities and equipment, that provides for schools to deal with growing enrollment. I mentioned that this budget proposal contains some targeted service level increases. Specifically, the proposed budget provides the Hopkinton Public Schools with a three-point-two million dollar funding increase, not including substantial increase in school and town staff benefits costs. The school budget will also include an additional one-point-one million dollars in article fourteen to support tuition for special education students who are placed in programs outside the community. The school department will address this and other increases during the discussion of, of this article. And other town departments, increases support the sustainment of fiscal year twenty twenty-four level services. The tax impact of the proposed budget on existing homeowners will be four percent if all the capital items proposed for general fund support are approved by town meeting, and if approvals are voted at the May twentieth town election for items, including debt, to be excluded from the tax limits of proposition two and a half. That four percent would add five hundred and five dollars on the existing twelve thousand, four hundred, fifty-four tax bill for Hopkinton's average residents, which now has an assessed value of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. The specific appropriation committee departmental line, by line-dollar recommendations are in the report on pages fifty-eight through sixty-seven, with the specific dollar recommendations on the right-hand column titled appropriation committee recommendation. The operating budget presented today was developed through a very public and collaborative process, one that involved contributions from dozens of citizen volunteers, collaboration with the town's professional staff, timely distribution of key information to the public, and many opportunities for public comment and involvement, including dedicated public listening sessions. The budget does a good job of addressing pressing needs within the existing constraints, including tax impact. I also want to be ve, very briefly discuss the longer-term horizon for the operating budget. The valuation of property in Hopkinton over the past decade has continued to rise, driven by both new construction and steep growth in the value of existing property. And while the town has an important commercial industrial presence, the numbers show that Hopkinton is truly a community of homes and families. Considering the general fund, pay-as-you-go capital proposals, enterprise funds, and community preservation, budgeted spending will top one hundred and twenty million, one hundred and twenty-three million for a growing town in the coming year. Even with the approval of the Elmwood replacement and the proposed Hopkins School addition, current debt levels from, current debt levels remain within the town's established policy limits and within the state's statutory limit for municipal debt. The town continues making progress in funding long-term liabilities, which has been a longstanding goal. The public, the Hopkinton's public employee pension is tracking to be fully funded by twenty thirty-six, and the other post-employee benefit, or OPEB, liability for public employee retiree health care is tracking to be fully funded by the mid-twenty-fifties. As of today, Hopkinton retains the very highest bond rating, standard and poor's triple-A, which allows the town to borrow for construction improvement projects at the very lowest possible financing cost. However, the tu, the town does face several noteworthy long-term financial challenges. First, the town has approved construction of the Elmwood School replacement at last year's special town meeting, and the school department had, also has a warrant order, article for a major upgrade to the Hopkins School at this year's annual town meeting. In addition, looking at the five-year capital plan, there may be future borrowing for an eventual center, school reuse, and for additional water system infrastructure. These projects could have very significant tax impact and water rate impacts. However, I want to be very clear that items in the five-year capital plan for fiscal years twenty-five through twenty-nine are not fully developed and are not being considered for approval tonight, but they are important to understand for planning purposes. Second, over the past decade, the town has relied on new revenue from new residential construction, especially at legacy farms, to not only cover the cost of expanded services tied to growth, but to also cover a portion of the inflationary cost increases in town salaries and expenses that are unrelated to growth. If new residential development slows, as is projected in the multi-year budget forecast, inflationary costs for providing ongoing services that are above the two-and-a-half property tax increase allowed by state proposition two-and-a-half law will create future budget shortfalls. With these pressures, it will be important for the town to focus on spending control, both within the cost base for existing services, considering what new service expansions can be undertaken, and in concerning, concerning the timing of major capital projects. The development of spending plans for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and beyond will have to balance these, have to balance these competing pressures. The town's elected and appointed leaders must track these issues very closely. As I noted earlier, property tax makes up the vast majority of the town's revenue for general government activities, including the schools and other town departments. Local aid from the Commonwealth is the town's next most important source of funds in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, but this upcoming year is expected to be flat with a lower than initially anticipated one-point-four percent increase. The town benefited from a two-million-dollar increase in free cash and a nine percent increase in local receipts, which include excise tax. The two-million-dollar increase in free cash is due primarily to improved departmental efficiencies, along with savings from unfilled positions, and one-point-seven million dollars in interest for money market accounts from appropriated funds that have not yet been spent. On the expense side, Hopkinton's outstanding public schools are by far the largest slice of the spending picture. In addition to the direct segments shown for education, the majority of amounts for benefits and insurance and debt payments directly support education. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the excluded debt service increased by one-point-five million dollars, or twenty-two percent. This amount is mainly for a portion of the Elmwood Replacement School bar, borrowing passed at special town meeting this past November. Earlier mention was the town's triple-A bond rating. A higher bond rating means lower borrowing costs, which will be increasingly important if the town enters a period of aggressive facility renewal. One of the factors that supports that rating is a healthy town level of financial reserves. Article twelve will propose to add seven hundred thousand to the general stabilization fund to grow that fund as the overall budget grows. The slide on the screen shows the current and projected... The slide on the screen shows the current and projected general government fund principal debt levels and looks forward, taking into account five years of projects that have been previously been authorized at town meeting or are proposed on this year's warrant. This is the total borrowing for the Elmwood Replacement School and the proposed Hopkins addition. The predicted total debt service, net of MSBA reimbursements, will increase to eleven-point-three, fourteen-point-five, and fifteen-point-one million in fiscal years twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, respectively. The actual debt service will be determined when the borrowing occurs, and the dollar figure may vary each year depending on the interest rates and the town's credit rating. Initial estimates, estimates using planning amounts and projecting a four percent interest rate, the capital plan, along with a slowdown in new residential growth, could lead to an overall ten, ten to twenty-two percent increase in property tax bills in the coming five years. Slide nine shows a comparison of the tax impact of the proposed budget to inflation for the past twelve months, with several years of data shown. The big jump in the darker bar on the chart over the last three years reflects much higher interest rates of inflation that impacts the cost of goods and services the town buys. The tax impact has been managed within the tax increase limits of two-and-a-half percent, which is truly a positive outcome for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. But because nationwide inflation continues to be at high levels exceeding two-and-a-half percent and the anticipated decline of new growth in Hopkinton, there will be challenges on the town budget in coming years. Overall, the budget presented today does a very good job of balancing competing priorities.
Can you wrap up, please?
I, one, thirty seconds.
This budget supports the continuation of excellent public services, and it does so while preserving the reserve stabilization funds and funding for long-term liabilities. The select board recommends approval, and the appropriation committee recommends approval. I understand the Hopkins Public Schools may have additional comments on the operating budget and will have comments on capital items when those are up for discussion. We move the motion as written in the warrant articles and motions document. Thank you.
So we're gonna let the school committee do the second half of this, and then we can have questions and comments over the, the whole budget. So if you thought of some questions that you'd wanna ask or comment about Mike's presentation, please hold, hold on to them while we hear from the school committee. So Megan, we gave them fifteen minutes.
Good evening. I'm Carol Kavanagh, Superintendent of Schools. This is the FY twenty-five school budget. Next slide, please. So as we always do, we approach the budgeting this year by stressing fiscal responsibility to our building principals and all of our directors, and then being careful to respond to shifts in demographic needs, as well as the needs of our students. We pledge to maintain our exceptional educational and extracurricular programs, offer curriculum and instruction that meets the needs of all learners, including their academic, behavioral, mental health, special education, and social emotional needs to accommodate our increasing enrollment growth, and of course, support the five building principals' school improvement plans. What you see before you is Dr. Arthur Wagman's enrollment projections, and that is enrollment projections with new housing students. As you can see, at the end of this year, he was projecting four-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight, eighty-six students, and at this time, we're at four-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-nine. The budget that you'll see tonight for FY twenty-five was built on four-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety students. The budget for this current year, FY twenty-four, was built on four-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty. Next slide, please. As you're looking at that, you can discern that we are eighty-nine students over, or sixty-four students, depending on if we're using cohort survival or cohort survival with new housing. But either that way, despite the fact that we are a little bit over, what I want you to see tonight in this presentation is that what we are asking for indicates that we have very, very carefully considered our needs based on demographics and enrollment. The other thing you can see on this slide, there's just a very quick box there that shows the current enrollment of the Hopkins School. Next slide, please. So taking a look at what our building principals have asked, and again, this is based on just enrollment and student need. At the Marathon School, Mrs. DeBeau is looking for a point-five adjustment counselor, and that will bring Marathon in line with the other two elementary schools, giving her two-point-oh FTE adjustment counselors like the others. At Elmwood, Mr. Bronniger is looking for one-point-two math tutors. Essentially, it's two-point-six positions, and these were previously grant-funded, but what they do is they help our struggling mathematicians in grade two and three get up to benchmark. At Hopkins, Mr. Carter is looking for a point-oh-five music teacher. That may seem like a typographical error, but it is not. We simply need just one more section of music in order to be able to accommodate the enrollment growth there. At the middle school, Mr. LaFave is looking for a point-two Mandarin teacher. We need one more section of Mandarin, and that additional section of Mandarin instruction is just based on student enrollment and kids who are interested in taking Mandarin Chinese as their language, and we're very thrilled to see that program grow. And finally, at the high school, Mr. Bishop is looking for one-point-oh FTE. That will be divided among his different departments. It's simply because the incoming ninth-grade class is slated to be about thirty-two students greater than the outgoing twelfth-grade class. Next slide, please. So when we're looking at student data and budget impacts, in addition to the principals asks, what you're going to see is that we have more students with special education needs. We have fewer students with English learner needs. And based on the increased overall enrollment at Hopkins, which I just pointed out was in the red box, that really translates to the need for additional building-based administration there. Next slide, please. What you see before you is DESI data. So the Department of Elementary and Edu, and Secondary Education tells us that in FY two thousand and nineteen, we had four-hundred-and-forty-two students on ed plans in Hopkinton. In twenty twenty, it was four-sixty-four. In twenty twenty-one, it was four-seventy-six. In twenty twenty-two, it was four-eighty. And currently, today, we have six-hundred-and-four students who qualify for special education services. Thirty-six of those children are out of the district. So as you are looking at the bar graph, you can see what has happened. The special educators' caseloads have grown. Currently, we have seven-point-three full-time equivalent special educators for every one-hundred students with disabilities. Typically, we like to live around ten FTEs for every, ten students on, on each educator's caseload, and currently, it's gone up to fourteen with these numbers. You can see Wayland is at ten-point-four, Westbro is at ten-point-five, Acton Boxpro eight-point-two, and we like to live in that realm. Next slide. And so what has happened since two thousand and nineteen, when we were at ten FTEs for every one-hundred students, we have dropped down to eight-point-four in twenty twenty, risen again to nine-point-three in twenty-one, fell to eight-point-eight in twenty twenty-two, and today, it's at seven-point-three. That is not appropriate for our most vulnerable learners, and so you will notice that there are two special education positions in the budget tonight. In terms of English learner data, there has been a decline in our numbers of English learners. In twenty twenty, we had two-hundred-and-thirty-eight students who were defined as English learners. That number has dropped eleven percent. But I think what you'll see that's interesting between twenty twenty and today is that number rose to two-sixty-two, then two-seventy-eight. And so from its highest point to today, we've dropped about fifty-eight students who are English learners. So you're going to see a reduction in English learners. We are asking for one fewer, we've taken that out of the budget. In terms of our administrative request, at the Hopkins School, you can see that in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, we had five-hundred-and-three students in that building, two-hundred-and-twenty-one in grade four, two-eighty-two in grade five. Today, there are six-hundred-and-eighty-nine children in that building, an increase of one-hundred-and-eighty-six kids. And that was back in the day when there were twenty-four classrooms. Today, we have thirty general educators, a number of special educators, and of course, people who are working as support staff. It's very difficult for an assistant principal and a principal to parcel out discipline, evaluate all of those teachers, and when a bullying report is filed, the assistant principal is taken offline for three or four days while the investigation occurs, along with a school adjustment counselor. They are in a position where kids are not getting what they need if we have to pull away an assistant principal, and so we are asking for an assistant principal for Hopkins. Our administrative reduction, the reduction comes in the form of our social emotional learning director. She's been with us for three years. Over the, when I came to Hopkinton eight years ago, every building principal had a social emotional learning goal in their school improvement plan. What has happened is we've made that more cohesive over the last three years. All of the things that you see on the slide in front of you, and even if it's difficult for you to read, you can see those are things that she has implemented in her time here and the grade levels at which they fall. What's happened is we've worked on designing and building over three years, and now we believe that we are able to sustain and maintain using our current personnel, and they may be central office personnel or building-level personnel, so these things can continue. Before I close, I do wanna show you, I do it all the time, your per pupil expenditure, and this is how it falls into buckets. So how much money does Hopkinton put into things like administration or teachers or professional learning for our teachers? And if it's a red circle, it means that we are in the bottom twenty-five percent across the state. If it's a blue circle, it means that we are in the bottom fifty percent across the state. And if it's in a green circle, it means we're in the top thirty percent. And you see that there are lots of reds and blues for both FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two. And those are the most recent years that DESI has, that the DESI website will give us data for. On the next slide, you can see where we land in a group of thirty-two different districts, one, of course, being the state of Massachusetts. And we're thirty-first in a group of thirty-two, and these are thirty-two that we either share a contiguous board or we want to be like, or they want to be like us, but they've been chosen and historically used. And I don't show you this every year because I'm complaining about our per pupil expenditure, but I think it underscores our fiscal responsibility when we put together a budget for the taxpayers in Hopkinton. If we go to the next slide, you can see that we are reaping the benefits of the Hopkinton Public Schools, and that is due in large part to the incredible people who are educating your children every single day. Everyone who works in our school works for the kids, and of course, our administration. What you see there is the most recent U.S. News and World Report rankings that came out last week. In those top seven high schools across Massachusetts, there are only two true public high schools. Everyone else is either charter or exam. Lexington is ranked third, which puts them in number one up with, within public schools. Hopkinton is ranked seventh, which puts us at number two across all public schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Feels pretty good. And then finally, just our reach niche rankings before I hand it over to Mrs. Rotherick. We are first ranked, best teachers in Massachusetts, no surprise, best places to teach in Massachusetts, and number one, best school district in Massachusetts. So thank you.
Next slide, please. So looking at the operating budget, the twenty-four operating budget was fifty-nine million, nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. The FY twenty-five salary increase is two-point-two million, or three-point-seven-seven percent. The expense increase at nine-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, or one-point-five-eight percent. For a total increase of three-point-two million, or a sixty-three million, one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand budget, an increase of five-point-three-five percent. The school committee always also offsets the operating budget from the general fund by using the revolving accounts. There's a use of the parking revolving, building use, bus revolving, preschool revolving, athletics, international tuition, and circuit breaker, for a total offset to the budget of three-point-four million, almost three-point-five. And this represents an increased use over FY twenty-four budget of eight-hundred-and-two thousand. And lastly, the special education reserve of one-million-ninety-four. That article was part of the consent agenda that is also part of the operating budget. So breaking it down, looking at the salaries, there is a contractual increase for FY twenty-five of one-point-five million and staff requests of seven-hundred-and-one thousand. Again, so salary contractual of one-point-five, special education request of two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, or three-point-six full-time equivalent positions. And these positions, some were covered by that increase in revolving and grant funding. Instructional cost and enrollment growth, a request of two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, the two-point-nine-five FTEs. Zero for instructional program enhancements and support, and a request of two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, or two-point-nine FTEs. So the salary increase again is two-point-two million, and that is nine-point-four-five FTEs. Drilling this down further, which will take you back to what Dr. Kavanagh spoke to earlier. Student services, three-point-five teaching at Elmwood, the middle school and high school, five paraprofessionals at Marathon, Elmwood, and Hopkins. Five-point-two of these positions are offset by the increase of one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand in grants and ninety thousand in the preschool revolving, and a point-three administrative support. Instructional cost and enrollment growth, two-point-nine-five teaching for Marathon, Elmwood, Hopkins High School and the middle school, a one position for the ESOL reduction, a one position, middle school ELA director, and this position was formally covered by a grant, and an increase in substitutes. Administration support and facility enhancements, one position for Hopkins Assistant Principal, one Building and Grounds Assistant Director, one custodian, a point-five athletic trainer, coaches stipends, which were in, offset by a hundred thousand increase in the athletic revolving, technology summer help, eight-point-four administrative assistant for the Assistant Superintendent, offset again by that SEL director reduction. Looking at the expense increases, increase of nine-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. This represent contractual inflation and current services of two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, student services of a hundred-and-ninety thousand, instructional cost, enrollment growth, an increase of four-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand.
You've got thirty seconds.
Taking this down, contractual, putting both salary and expenses together, you'll see the contractual inflation and current services of one-point-eight million. Special education, the instructional cost, and the administration. Last slide. Looking at these from a percent increase, you can see the largest percent is within your contractual inflation and current services. Then special education at point-seven-three percent, instructional cost at one-point-one-nine, and administration support and facility enhancements at point-three-six percent.
Okay, thanks. Perfect. All right, so people can approach now with questions or comments about either of the two presentations. So when you approach, as a reminder, please say your name and your address alongside what you, sort of, where, where you're starting. Yes, please.
Name's Steve Popkas, Twenty-Four Cedar Street Extension. I believe this question is to Dr. Kavanagh.
So you, you ask it through me?
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Now we can, yes.
Okay, I'll just shrink.
You can, you can tip it. There you go.
Okay, Steve Popkas, Twenty-Four Cedar Street Extension. Dr. Kavanagh made a comment of a tax increase of four-point-four percent, and I just didn't quite understand whether that included all of the two-and-a-half overrides that are in the current warrant, or is this just for the budget that we have here?
Okay, thank you. That's a question, maybe, is that for you, Mike, or?
Well, I believe that's just the increase for the school department over the, from year over year. It's not the overall tax impact or increase. I believe that's the question that was asked.
Yep. Okay. Yes.
Sam Doktimitz, Eight Erica Drive. I have a question asked through the moderator.
Yes.
In the appropriation committee presentation on bullet on one of your slides said you have a three-year forecast of budget deficits. So I wish you could comment on quantifying how big those deficits will appear and what your thoughts are on closing those deficits, and whether the deficits are including in that range of potential tax increases, starting at ten percent and going up to possibly twenty-two percent tax increase.
So the majority of those increases, that's the operational increase, not necessarily just from the debt exclusions. But what we're talking about is, you know, each year, we do, you know, we budget conservatively based on revenue. Like, for instance, I believe at the beginning of this year, we had over a million-dollar deficit that we were able to find, really focus on and get rid of that deficit. deficit that we were able to find, really focus on, and get rid of that deficit. So even though right now we're looking at $4 million, we, the revenue incoming, we're always very, take a very conservative outlook. So it's just something we have to deal with, and we have to plan to see if it gets out of control. We look year over year to see what the new growth is, and, you know, maybe there's other new growth coming in from additions or other types of projects coming in. That, you know, that's an important piece, but we just don't know four years out. But we're taking the conservative aspect. But we are always looking at ways to decrease that amount through efficiency or, you know, a lot of its benefits, so we're always looking to see what we can do there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about this operating budget? Okay. We are gonna use the clickers for this vote. Okay. So as a reminder, we'll open the voting when we're ready, and if you are voting to approve the operating budget as laid out in Article 7, you'll choose a green button for yes, a red button for no. The vote that's needed is a simple majority. All right. So we're getting close to the number that we, that we gave out. I'll give it like a couple more seconds. If you haven't voted for some reason, please make your choice now. Okay, Nicole, you can close the voting. Okay. So including the one vote at home, the yes is 280, the no is 70. So with a simple majority, the budget passes. Moving on to Article 8, the revolving fund spending limits.
Article 8, fiscal year 2025 revolving fund spending limits. We move the, the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval. Essentially, the revolving fund spending limits by, under state law, Hopkinton has established a number of self-sustaining revolving funds that are authorized to collect user fees and pay costs to provide certain services. These funds are commonly called 53 E and a half funds, as they are authorized by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half. There are no property taxes or under general revenues spent through these funds. Specific examples would be funds that collect building permit fees and use the fee proceeds to pay staff and expense costs by managing the permitting process. These funds have to be, or this has to be approved every single year. In this year, the revolving funds, there's only one change, the amounts are same year over year. The police department increased their fund from $12,500 to $14,000.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the revolving fund spending limits that were just outlined? Okay, this is a vote for which we need a simple majority. I'll take a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Do you have the home vote? I'm pretty sure it's not gonna, there were no noes. Yeah. Okay. So we, we did not have a home vote on that one, and the ayes take it with a, with a simple majority. Okay. Can I let you take Article 9? Okay. I'm gonna ask Connor to cover Article 9, and step away for a moment.
Okay, folks. So Article 9, PEG access, cable-related funding. Do we have a motion from the Appropriation Committee?
Yes, Article 9, PEG access and cable-related funding. We moved the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
And Select Board?
The Select Board recommends approval.
And do we have a presentation?
Yep. And the Appropriation Committee recommends approval. Essentially, as part of cable TV licensing agreements, the town has negotiated with cable TV service providers to pay state-authorized public access surcharges to the town to support PEG access. Under provision previously passed by town meeting, these fees flow into Public Educational and Government Access Fund, PEG revolving account. So this year, the article would transfer $285,438 accumulated in that revolving account, and $70,000 from free cash to provide it to HCAM to support community programming. To be clear, HCAM is an independent, not-for-profit organization, not a part of town government.
Thank you very much, Mike. Do we have any questions, comments? One coming up on my left.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street. I would like to amend this motion to increase the funding by $50,000, which will come from certified free cash. We have about $5.7 million of it, so we should be able to afford that. The funding will be used for staff and equipment, both of which are needed. Anyone in here ever watch HCAM? There's 73 people watching this meeting right now. And as you'll see in the budget, most of their funding comes from agreements with Comcast and Verizon, but some of it comes from certified free cash. In 2023, 2.3 million Americans cut the cord. And in 2024, the number of people who stream their television will outnumber those that have cable, and that threatens HCAM's existence. HCAM provides essential coverage of government and school functions, and in many cases, it's the only way senior citizens, some of whom cannot make it to meetings, get access to their government. This is a critical community resource. It enables transparency and accountability, and highlights the best our students and our student athletes have to offer. I formally move to amend the motion to increase the proposed funding by $50,000 to be transferred from certified free cash.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Did you file that amendment with the amendment desk?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Josh, can we get the amended version of the motion up with the new number? And also, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, so we have the amended language up. Mr. Manning, do you have anything to add on this?
Just a clarification on the amount of free cash available. It is more on the line of unallocated is 2.2,641,182.88. So it's not over $5 million.
Thank you. Okay, so now what we're gonna do is we're gonna go for a motion to amend. Does anyone have any comments on the motion to amend? Okay, seeing no one, if we can go to a vote, we're just gonna do a voice vote for this one really quick. So we're gonna, it's a simple majority vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, let's just do, let's go for a clicker vote, just to be safe. It's just a simple majority, folks, but it never hurts to be sure, especially when we have it at our fingertips. Okay, this is the subsidiary motion to amend the motion on Article 9, as shown on the screen and as presented. So we're going to now open up the voting. So if everyone can go ahead, and you can open, the voting is open, use your devices. Okay, let's get our last votes in, and then, oh, it's still going up, I'm gonna give it Okay, we're going to go ahead and close that poll. Okay, so it is 2:33 to 1:02, the motion to amend passes. And now, we're gonna go ahead to the main motion as amended. So this is going to be, the motion as amended. Do we have any comments or questions on the final motion as amended? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead, we're gonna go straight to just a regular clicker vote on this one. Can we switch back over to the, to Article 9? Okay, this one will also just be a simple majority. Okay, people, we are gonna close up the poll. Okay, so it's 2:35 to 70. We had a yes at home, so that's gonna be 2:36 to 70, only motion as amended. And with that, I'm gonna turn the mic back over to our moderator.
Okay, we are on Article 15, opioid funds appropriation.
Article 15, opioid funds appropriation. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval. Essentially, this $45,190.32 is taken from free cash, but essentially, it's because of a settlement that has always already been paid, and it went into free cash. So we're just transferring it to the rightful account where it should be by approving this.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. So for this, we would need a simple majority. Let's try a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we, we are unanimous in the hall. Moving on to Article 16.
Article 16 is a revised motion for pay-as-you-go capital expenses. So we are moving the motion as displayed on the screen. It is a different amount that's probably in the warrant articles and motions document, so what's on the screen is the, the formal recommendation, which is essentially 1,3766 million.
Is this right? Okay. So if, if that number isn't right, I think we're gonna have to, I guess we're gonna, we should look at each of the items, so you can identify where, where there's a difference. Do you have?
It's number eight.
Is that the only one?
Town facilities, yep, that's $100,000, that's no longer on the list.
Okay. Could we pull this back up? I think if there's that, only that one change, I think people would, could, could see it. And it's, it's number eight? That's the only number that's different?
Yep. That's correct.
Okay. So we, we will be looking around the same thing we were just looking at.
So I believe the number is correct, the amount is correct, it's just that it's still listed on the table.
It's, I'm sorry?
The totals. So it's not.
This is. Can, can, can we get that back up, so, so the appropriations commi, there we go. Okay. So is that the, is, is number eight the only change, so all the other numbers are correct? And, and is that, is that struck?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if you don't mind going back up to the total, is the total $100,000 less?
Yes. That's correct.
Point of order.
Yes.
Can you please, Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road, can you please explain why we are allowed to amend this article without a vote on the amendment, and it is no longer listed accurately as approved on the issued warrant?
It's not amended, this is the.
Yeah, the motion hasn't been made, so they are making the motion with, with the, the corrected number in it.
So through the moderator, that is a change to the approved motion. Whether or not it was an error of intent, ignorance, or omission, it isn't a change. We need to be very careful about what a modification of what is being voted on here is, and how it is done and progressed.
Thank you. We have counsel here who is advising that this is happening in, within the motion. Am I right? It's happening within the motion? He's making the motion with the correct, with the correct amount? Okay. Okay. Okay, so counsel's explaining to me that the Appropriations Committee could make the motion as written in the, in the warrant that we all have, or they can make the amendment as their, as their. the amendment as they're, as they're rolling it out to make that change, and, and either option is, is within their, their, I guess, protocol, right? Yep, sorry, let me have counsel speak. Go ahead. Can you introduce yourself if you don't want?
Here you go, you're good. Can people hear me? Okay. Good evening, my name is Chris Brown, I'm filling in as town council tonight. So, the issue is that the motion that's in the article can be moved by the sponsor or by the appropriations committee, however, they don't have to. So, that main motion that was made by the appropriations committee can be a different number, as long as they, they explain the difference from the warrant, and I believe that's what they've tried to do here. So, it's not an amendment, to be clear, it's a main motion, it's just a different number than was published in the warrant.
I would like, if it's possible, I would like to have this adjusted on the screen, so everybody is looking at and thinking about the same number. So, I think you captured it here. If you can scroll down, up, down, and make this number, well, can you, yeah, there you go, right. You're taking out this 100,000, and you're putting a zero right in. I don't know if you could see that? Okay, does that now reflect what you are, are, is that what you want?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, so the motion on the floor is for this, this information that has just been updated for everybody, so yes, please introduce yourself.
I can explain it.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so essentially, this is, sorry, this is pay-as-you-go capital expenses, and essentially, that, that total is $1,013,716, but it is minus $520,000 for ambulance receipts reserve, meaning that the number six, the ambulance to replacement, is covering through their own fund, so that's not part of the free cash that's used to pay for this total. So, on the list, we have end-user computer hardware refresh, that's, you know, refresher laptops, network switches, cyclical replacement of multifunction printers, police, three replace, three police cruisers, replacement vehicles, Lucas CPR machine, the ambulance to replacement, Fruit Street garage repairs, replacement street sweeper, super duty pickup for the Department of Public Works, and school system-wide technology upgrades, that is, wireless access points have to be replaced, and this is part of a scheduled, receipt, part of a scheduled process year over year. But we also have participatory budget items, this is where people from the community had the opportunity to make suggestions. And here, we had budget items totaling $52,400. One, we're, included two ADA accessible door exits, and a fence at the Hopkins Center for the Arts, Black Earth composting starter kits for residents, and finally, oh, and also pollinator gardens at the Hughes Farm and Pratt Farm Conservation Areas, and turtle crossing signs.
Thank you. And what is a select board?
The select board recommends approval.
Okay, appropriation committee?
An appropriation committee recommends approval.
Capital improvements committee?
Excited to approve spending less money.
Thank you, okay. Now, we can open the floor, yes, please.
Ken Weissman, 145 Ash Street, I'd like an explanation, Madam Moderator, as to why item eight was removed, and what was, what were we gonna get for the $100,000?
Thank you. Deputy through you? Sure?
I was just told it was removed, I don't know if facilities had a reason for that?
Yes. Okay, would you like to approach some mic, and can you introduce yourself, please? That, sorry, that mic isn't on. You might have to slide it to turn it on, there's a little switch. If you don't mind, yeah, sorry about that. Okay, you, can you introduce yourself now, thanks?
Dan McIntyre, Chair of the Permanent Building Committee. We requested this $100,000 many months ago when we were developing the budget, as part of our facilities planning for center school, reuse of the center school. Over this past week, we've looked at our money from previous allocations and previous years, and we have enough money to finish off our report and recommendations to the select board without needing any additional money. So, we requested the town manager to take this off earlier this week. So, we no longer need the money.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, yes, may you approach the mic and?
Yes, hi, I'm Stuart Cowart, 34 North Mill Street. I know a little bit about this stuff, but I just, it just dawned on me, we're hearing free cash, free cash, free cash. And I think it could probably help folks to have a clear understanding as to the process that the appropriation committee goes through in order to say how we're gonna spend free cash, how much we're gonna maintain, you know, I'm all for capital, keeping up with our, our equipment and so forth, but I think as we dip into free cash, it's not free, it really isn't. And it's money that was either budgeted for in the past that wasn't spent, either overbudgeted or through good management. But to, to have it kind of pop up article by article by article without a comprehensive sort of understanding as to the plan for spending free cash, 'cause it can also be used, we don't have a tax increase, that's another, budget items can come under, under that. So, I guess, I just wanna understand to what level we are actually looking to preserve free cash for what's coming down the pike.
Thank you, yes, Mike.
So, it's a good, that's a good question, and we, you know, we do scrutinize how we use the free cash that is available, and one of the main criteria is that we use it for non-reoccurring expenses. We do not like to put it in as part of our operational and, you know, year-over-year operational budget, so they go for one, one-time items. And yes, this year, we had a little bit of extra free cash from the reasons I mentioned in the presentation earlier, but a lot of it was, some of it was unused, but a lot of it's from efficiencies. Our insurance and benefits costs were, were a little bit less, 500,000 less, and just the money that we have allocated, you know, for other projects that we have not yet spent, are sitting in money market funds, if you know, the interest rates are like over 5% for market rates, we got over $1.7 million. So, yes, our free cash is not free, but it also gives us the ability to use it on capital expenditure, capital items that, that aren't recurring, that otherwise, we would probably borrow or, or take on debt itself. So, this is a good way to use free cash, and we, we are pretty careful of how we use it.
Thank you, yes.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street, Madam Moderator, moments ago, Mr. Manning corrected me when I said we had $5.7 million of free cash, so there was actually quite a bit lower than that. I'm looking at page 26 of the appropriation committee report, column right in the middle says excess from prior fiscal year, certified free cash, $5.7 million and some change. So, Madam Moderator, I'd like Mr. Manning to clarify why it is not 5.7, but it's actually 2 point something, or whatever, because I was going off of what we projected to have at the end of FY '25. Thank you.
Sure, Mike, did you wanna answer that, or explain?
So, the, the amount in the appropriation committee report was for annual town meeting, but for a special town meeting, which is tomorrow, we are also using from our free cash from there for the fire HVAC, for the wood fill project. So, that, that lowered that amount. So, I believe right now, our unallocated is, free cash is 2.2,641,182.88 minus $50,000. And that's if everything else passes on, on the list.
Yes.
Madam Moderator, Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane.
Hold on one second, can people hear?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane, I have a request from the young woman who put in the request for the turtle signs. May I read that?
Yes. Can you do it in one minute and 40 seconds?
Absolutely. Turtles are very important to our ecosystem. Without turtles, our ecosystem would be, would completely fall apart. With more signs, our ecosystem will likely improve as more people are being aware. Small steps can lead to big changes. Let's change our environment for the better. Thank you for believing in the cause. Let's save them together, because every turtle matters. And Madam Moderator, last year, Anya Sony got an award from the EPA for her project, Every Turtle Matters. Thank you.
Oh, that's great. Sorry, I have been reminded that we are not supposed to clap. So, does anybody else have any questions, and I think a lot of good things have, have come up? Any questions or comments about Article 16 before we take a vote? Yes?
Kyle Smith, 25 Amherst.
Can you tip that up a little bit, so, you don't have to bend down, you can tip it up.
Point of clarification, on the operating budget, I believe it was stated, we needed $8 million for non-reduction in the bond rating, and we were forecasting five? Is that correct? It might be a two-part question. If no, then I don't have a second part.
That's okay, let me just make sure, so you have, the first question you asked was?
Yeah, it does, basically, does free cash impact the bond rating?
Okay.
It, it could, I mean, it, operational cash is part of our revenue that we use, so that's where we, when we have, like this article, it's included in the operational budget.
Okay, thank you, that is what I thought. So, is the projected $3 million, basically, deficit, where we want eight, we'll end up with five, is that inclusive of assuming this $1 million is spent?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? So, for, for pay-as-you-go capital expenses, we need a simple majority. Let's try a voice vote, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I think the ayes have it, I think regardless of the home vote. Okay, we are moving on to Article 17, the digitization of town records.
Article 17, digitization of all town records. Remove the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The select board recommends approval.
Okay, appropriation?
Appropriation committee recommends approval.
Okay, capital improvements committee? Okay, I see here that they recommend approval, no one from capital improvements here? Okay. Do you have a present?
Yeah, this, this article provides $667,500 through a general obligation borrowing, also requiring a citizen vote, allowing principal and interest to be excluded from the taxation limits imposed by Proposition 2 and 1/2. To this article itself is to digitize all of our documents historically, so this is a pretty major undertaking and will take several years, but the cost will be 667,000 to do it, and moving forward, all items will be digitized. So, this is just looking back and to make sure all our old documents are no longer needed in paper form.
Thank you.
And, the proposed debt, it's a debt exclusion, will be 20, the impact will be $22 per household for five years, in the peak year being for a homeowner with Hoppin's average home.
Okay, thank you. I think we have a presentation on this one. All right, Josh, you've got, you've got eight minutes.
This one works, yeah, all right. Article 17, the digitization of town records for?
Could you introduce yourself?
Sure, yeah. Good evening, I'm Josh Grissette, the town's IT director, and I'm here to ask for your support for a project to digitize the town's paper records. Currently, our paper documents are spread across multiple locations, miles apart, making access inefficient and slow. This first slide shows some examples of how the files are stored today. By digitizing and including these records in our electronic document management system, which already contains over 27,000 documents, we can offer immediate self-service for staff and residents from any computer, enhancing efficiency and transparency. Our recent successful digitization of over 100,000 pages for the health department demonstrates our capability to scale this effort. Digitization also protects our records from environmental risks like fire and flood, and improves findability with added metadata. The digital files will be stored in a cloud environment across redundant geographical dispersed data centers. Please support this important initiative to safeguard the town's files and increase ease of access.
Does anybody have any questions or, or comments about this one? Yes?
Anne Matina, 40 East View Road, through you, Madam Moderator, I'm wondering, does this include the town clerk's records that are in the vault?
Yes.
This is Connor Deegan, your town clerk. I am pleased to inform you that we are looking at this being, including the records in the vault, so that we'll have more digital access to a lot of those. We are, we have a number of them, we have digitized over the years, and this would also encompass any of the stuff that we have hard copy, digital versions of, so that we can encompass that all in one spot, so it's easy to reach for everyone.
I think, if there, I could ask one more question, that's my question, is about access. Who has, who will have access? The gentleman just said, anybody with a computer, so.
Yeah, sorry, if I may, Madam Moderator, through you, through the moderator, this would allow access through a portal that is accessible to the public, so anybody with access to a computer would have access to look at the public records that we have digitized through this project.
Okay, great, thank you.
Very welcome.
And thank you.
Amy Groves, 2 College Street, it looks like this might be including the cloud storage, but I just wanted to make sure, is, is it including the storage, 'cause this is a lot of cloud storage, and that will cost money.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, the, the cloud storage is very minimal and marginal compared to the overall cost of the project, and that cost is included in the IT department's operating budget.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Andrew Skavich, from 46 East View Road.
Could you put the, a mic down a little, please, do you mind repeating?
Hi, Mary Andrew Skavich, from 46 East View Road. Along the questions about costs, to me, this project sounds like it should be also associated with some space savings. We get rid of records, we should be able to get rid of file cabinets, get rid of floor space, and to me, in terms of cloud storage, this is being presented as something that we're funding now, but we're gonna pay for this cloud storage in perpetuity, and I think I heard that our, our taxes are going up annually, five ball, to $5, I think, in perpetuity. So, I'm wondering, where's the cost reduction associated with projects like this?
Okay, so do you have, you have a question about cost reduction and space, and is there a, in? perpetuity tax increase?
Increase in tax increase.
Okay, yeah. Did you want to answer that?
Yes, I did mention that the proposed debt will be $22 for five years in the peak year. So, it's not in perpetuity, it's five years.
But our taxes never go down by $5, do they? Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yes, hi.
Mary Arnot, 51 Teresa Road. I'm in favor of digitizing town records. It just seems that, and I have an IT background, so if I understood the presentation, Madam Moderator, through here, through you, it said it was a five-year project that in total would cost $667,000. My background in IT tells me it's going to be way more than that, and that to fund a project now at this level, when we may have, all records are a lot of records, so I'm not sure what's included in that. Bottom line, my question, I'm in favor of the article, but my question is, are we really, do we really need to budget the whole thing upfront now for five years? And if we are, I think it's under what it's really going to cost us.
Thank you. So, is that a statement or a question?
Well, the question is, do we really need to fund the five-year project? Can we fund it in increments that we know, in fact, by the end of the records all being digitized, we will have funded it appropriately?
Thank you. Josh, or...
Was that clear?
I'm just trying to get somebody...
I can clarify the five-year part.
Okay.
The debt is a five-year borrowing, it has nothing to do with the length of the project itself. So, that's $22 for five years, and then the debt is paid, that's for the borrowing. So, Josh...
Okay, so, yeah, let's have Josh answer that other part of that question. Josh, I think that mic hopefully is... No.
Testing.
There you go.
And the mic works now. Thank you. We expect the project to take between one and a half and two and a half years to complete.
Okay. Thank you, yes.
Darlene Hayes, 1 Third Road. I know that we rent space for a lot of our storage now, some of it at 77 Main Street. In this cost, have we taken into account that we will no longer need to be renting that space? Is there a deduction already taken in from the rental?
Maybe you should stay there, Josh.
That cost is paid for from the Facilities Department operating budget, and so there would be a reduction once those files are fully digitized and moved out of that rental space.
Thank you. One second. Yep, yes.
Through you, Madam Moderator. Just to clarify on what Josh was saying as well, one of the current issues that we kind of run into when it comes to Massachusetts' records laws and record retention laws, is we have to maintain a lot of paper even once we manage to digitize it. However, even the things that we end up digitizing, whether we get rid of paper or not, it gives ease of access to residents when it comes to searching for public records, but also when residents need to find more detailed information that needs to be redacted or anything, that gives us the ability to very quickly turn that around on the back end, which does actually realize a labor cost savings.
Okay. Yes.
Ben Chirco, 147 Lumber Street. Kind of what Connor said, all the hard copies are going to be saved, or will they be going somewhere else?
Go ahead. Oh, I don't know, whoever, who...
Through you, Madam Moderator. So, it depends on the record. Some records are required to stay, and others, we go through regular audits to identify what can be destroyed, so that we can remove that from space. But with so many records that are saved permanently, it makes it very difficult, it feels like you're kind of just, you kind of barely catch up before you get a whole other box full of paper in front of you. So, it's, we're going to see possibly some space savings, but we won't know until we've managed to digitize some, as well as see each, you know, we do it every year, every two years, to do an actual record audit where we decide what we're going to be shredding.
Did you have anything to add, Josh?
Just that, while for some of those records, we, we may need to maintain the paper copies indefinitely, once they've been digitized, those paper copies can be moved off-site to long-term cold storage. It's significantly less expensive than the space that we're leasing today.
Thank you. Okay.
Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. First, excited to hear you all finding religion on cost savings. That's an exciting development here at Town Meeting today. While we're on that topic, not all savings is immediately realized. One of the things that we discussed at Capital Committee when this came before us was the inherent risk reduction to the records themselves. Many of you may remember our Town Hall flooded not more than a few years ago. The cost of restoring, maintaining, demolding, dehumidifying those records was significant, as was the loss of records. So, no, I can't show it to you as a reduction in a line item on a budget, but at some point we need to also think about financial prudence as risk reduction. This represents a significant risk reduction against future expenditure.
Okay. So, does anyone else have any questions or comments before we go to a vote on Article 17? Okay. For this article, because we need a 2/3 majority, and also it will result in a ballot question if it passes, we will do an electronic vote on this. Nicole, are we ready? Okay. The green means yes, the red means no. All right, we'll give a couple more seconds if anyone's got, then vote. Okay. This is great, thirty, what's that? Okay. Can we close the vote, please? All right. 297, including the home vote? Yes. And 46, no. So, this passes at the 2/3 requirement. That means you'll see it on the ballot in a couple weeks. Okay. We are on to Article 18. The district-wide HVAC replacement. Okay, so in this one, I'd like to first recognize the sponsor.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Nancy Kavanaugh, 25 Priscilla Road. I'm here on behalf of the School Committee as the Chair, and just if I could just give a little bit of explanation before I recommend, brief, very brief. The School Committee met just prior to Town Meeting this evening and voted at that time to recommend that the Town Meeting take no action on Article 18. Capital planning and long-term planning includes end-of-life replacements. The original ask of $700,000 for Article 18 was for in-kind replacement of the Hopkins HVAC equipment for end-of-life, end-of-life replacement of existing equipment within the building. As the design of the Hopkins Edition project continued, it moved to trying to replace with greener options. Taking no action on Article 18 is to provide greater clarity for Town Meeting to wrap up end-of-life HVAC project within the full Hopkins project, which is included in Article 19. Taking no action on this article would be a decrease of $700,000 in funding, the school, that the School Committee is requesting for FY '25, as Article 19 includes funding for replacement of the HVAC.
Okay, so, I just want to make sure I understand, the sponsor has now recommended no action on Article 18?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that is a motion. So, what that means, I need a second. Okay, so I need a second, and the second would be that we would be voting on no action for Article... Pardon me?
It's a committee, the committee needs a motion, so we don't need a second.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so now we just need recommendations from the Select Board? Okay. I think the Appropriations Committee might need to vote also, and I don't know about, are there members of Capital Improvement Committee here who could vote on this? Can you vote on it together now, so you can give a recommendation in a minute? Okay, okay.
The Select Board recommends approval of no action.
Appropriation Committee recommends the no action.
Okay, and the, it sounds like the Capital Improvements Committee is not making a recommendation on this? Yep, yep, please come to the mic.
So, speaking as Capital, I'd like to understand how the shell is moving here and see what's going on in Article 19. This was just reflected to us by School Committee as a $700,000 budgetary reduction. I'd like to understand where that money came from and how it was discovered, and I'd like to see evidence that there is not going to be a downgrade in the HVAC being put forth.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand, are you asking, does the $700,000 get all of a sudden added to Article 19?
I'm asking to see the cost breakdown in Article 19 based on the School Committee's statement that no additional funding is needed and that the $700,000 is not required. Given the complexity, cost, and lead time of HVAC, I would like to understand how this was now rolled into that other project and to see the costing breakdown.
Okay. So, there, I know there's a very detailed presentation on Article 19. Should I try to find it, or what do I do here? But so, how do, what do I do, how do I do that, though? Did you have something to add about the HVAC in Article 19?
Just to clarify what I had said, it's not a reduction in the Article 19 ask, it's a, if we do, take no action on Article 17, sorry, on Article 18, then we're not asking for that $700,000 in the HVAC that's required for the Hopkins Edition, and the replacements that are greener is included in the budget for the Hopkins article, which is Article 19, which will be reflected in the presentation unless, Madam Moderator, you'd like to see more of that ahead of time.
Okay, okay, thank you. We are checking something. Does the... Do you, do you have the, the budget for the HVAC for the Hopkins? School that you could share? Hold on, we're checking one thing if we need to do that or not, but would you be able to bring that and, and share that section of Article 19 to answer this question? You could, maybe? Okay, okay, just one second. I know, I know, I know. Sorry, we're just, we're just checking a statutory question here. Yep. Yep. Okay. Was the information that would answer this question on the website, because it's part of the presentation for Article 19 that's on the, that was posted? No? Okay. Okay. Okay, so I just have gotten clarification from Town Council that if there is a recommendation to spend money, the Capital Improvement Committee does have to have voted and provide a recommendation. However, since the recommendation is no action, the Capital Improvement Committee does not need to have voted in order for this body to take a vote. Is that right? So...
Madam Moderator, Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road. I'm hoping someone from the School Committee can come up and talk to us about the adjustment on HVAC. I'd like to understand it in the context of this before I make my vote.
Okay. So, can someone from the, the, the School Team, can you do this without a presentation? Can you just explain what's happening with the HVAC? Because I think when we had our meeting last week or the other week, you were able, you did that, so can, can, can one of you do this without a, without a deck, though? Yeah?
Yes, so...
If you don't mind, can you reintroduce yourself, please?
Sorry, yes, I apologize. Susan Rothermick, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. As we present the Capital Plan, as we do every year, it is a 10-year look, and we're looking at end-of-life replacements. That plan comes out in the summer, so that would have been the summer of '23. So, we were very early in the design of the Hopkins project. In the original design of the Hopkins project, the HVAC was looking to not necessarily be all green. As we went further into the design, we were able to make it more of a green addition, and then the discussion started to become, if it is a green addition, how far into the existing building can we pull what will now be this side of the building versus the existing side of the building, and what can we do to pull those green alternatives into the existing building? So, at this stage, when we get to Article 19, you will see that we are currently at 60% design. So, there is a full line item, we have gone through three cost estimates, there is a line item for HVAC of $2.6 million, and what we've been able to do is grab some of the end-of-life replacements that are in the existing building, tie the, tying them into the new addition, making them green, and so that number, the end-of-life replacements, now is pulled into the full budget of Article 19. Is that helpful?
Well, that's a good starting point. I think that you were here first, would, do you have a, do you have a question related to this? Okay, go ahead. Do you mind introducing yourself, please?
Hello, Linda Chosey, 11 School Street. I was just wondering if it made sense to vote on this after Article 19?
It would, it would make, it would make sense, but we have a motion on the floor, so we can't, we can't move it at this point. Yes. You can, you can tip it. There you go.
Brian Douglas, 14 Greenwood Road. Madam Moderator, related to the previous question, so I'd like to understand that if Article 18 is pretty much accounted for in Article 19, in the event that Article 19 doesn't pass, then what is to become of the district-wide HVAC replacement?
That's a good question. Mrs. Brian Douglas? Mrs. Ryan, Ms. Rothermick, would you, could you answer that? If Article 19 would not pass, well, how would the, that impact the HVAC planning?
So you will see in Article 19, and it is written within the motions document, that the HVAC end-of-life replacement article that passed at last May's town meeting was put on hold so that we could proceed further into this project to see what we could do to be cost-conscious and possibly move to greener options. So the HVAC end-of-life replacements from last May's town meeting is on hold and is wrapped into the funding of Article 19. So if Article 19 does not pass, we will then move forward with the HVAC replacements that were from last town meeting to be in kind.
Thank you.
Thank, sorry, one second. Yes.
Peter Thomas, 215 Pond. Call for the question.
Okay, so does everybody, I don't know if everyone knows what that means, but when someone calls a question, that means they would stop debate and move to voting? So now that the question has been called, is that simple majority? Okay, so we need to have two-thirds of people agree that we won't talk about this anymore and we'll get right to the vote? Okay, I'm gonna try, I'll try to take this as a vote, voice vote. So what we're doing now is saying we're not going to talk about this anymore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we're not going to talk about this anymore, we're going to get to the vote. I want to be clear, in this case, you are voting. When you vote yes, you will be voting no action on Article 18. We need two-thirds majority.
Simple, it's a simple.
It's simple. Oh, sorry. Okay, since it's no action, it's actually just a simple majority? So let's try a voice vote on that one, too. All in favor of taking no action on Article 18, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to taking no action? Okay, so Article 18 wraps up with no action. Now we're moving on to Article 19.
Article 19, Hopkinton's Elementary School Edition. We moved the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation recommends approval. That was based on that it fits within our financial policy, the borrowing, so we did approve it based on that.
Capital recommended approval prior to adjustment.
Okay. Okay.
So I know the school has a presentation on this, but I just want to mention that the tax impact for the school is four, currently at $429 at its peak over a 30-year borrowing.
Okay.
So we're presenting tonight on the Hopkins Elementary School addition and renovation project. You can see by the slide before you that according to a very recent study done by Perkins Eastman, our designers are in our current configuration of the Hopkins School, using 24 of the original classrooms and four modular classrooms, sort of estimated at 22 students per classroom. Hopkins School can accommodate about 628 students if we were delivering curriculum and instruction optimally. Now, I know when you look at the number 22, you say, well, what if we added one student to each one of those classrooms and there was an additional 28 students? And you're going to see tonight that there is an ability for us to absorb students. It's what we've been doing largely over the last five years. But you're also going to see why Hopkins can't sustain, and you're going to see how that building's addition is going to help us as we move upstream and we think about students, student enrollment at the middle school and at the high school. The addition is going to accommodate a new regulation, regulation-sized gymnasium, essentially replacing the old one, 10 general education and two special education classrooms, increased parking. It will also include a relocation of the modular classrooms that exist now at the Elmwood School, and there will be levels of renovation inside the existing building as required by code. So I want to start out by looking at our original district-wide study and how that was really meant to just accommodate the enrollment as it was increasing super rapidly, and then move into what is the long-term plan and how does this renovation addition project assist us in long-term planning? So you'll remember that in 2019, Romy Rosain and Anderson was here before town meeting, and we talked about the space needs in all of our schools. At that time, all of our schools needed additional space. And so our short-term plan was to add portable classrooms to Elmwood, to Hopkins, six still-built, stick-built to the high school, and then an additional four classrooms, you know, that came to the Marathon School. That was only to cover the kids who were here in front of us at present. We were really playing catch-up. And so in 2020, Mrs. Rothermick and I submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest, and in the spring of 2021, in mid-pandemic, we were accepted into the pipeline for the MSBA, and we started a partnership for the Elmwood School. In conjunction with that work that we were doing with the MSBA, we had a second district-wide study completed. And what we did was we looked at all five school buildings to say, what will enrollment look like going forward, and how will that impact the physical plants and the taxpayers in the town of Hopkinton? So in that long-term plan, the School Committee voted to turn Elmwood, now Charleswood, into a 2-3-4 school, which really helped out the taxpayer by saying that if you have a financial partner and a construction partner in the MSBA, they would be paying for a grade-four physical plant in addition to a grade-two-three. So that was helpful piece number one. But we also had to look at Hopkins, and we came to the realization that Hopkins was not going to be able to accommodate future enrollment, and so it needed an addition. This addition, we hope you'll see, will help us in sort of defraying costs upstream. So what you see on that diagram is really a colored depiction of the enrollment at Hopkins School and the ways that it fit into the physical plant in January of 2023. So the blue pieces are those things that are oversized by 10%. Green means that that space is right-sized. Yellow means it's undersized by 10 to 20%, and if it's red, it's undersized by 20%, more than 20%. You can see that the gymnasium, that giant blue rectangle in the center, right now it's oversized, or at that point in time, it was oversized by 10%. The cafeteria was undersized, the library was undersized, the servery, that kitchen area of that cafeteria, was very undersized, and things like the band room, music orchestra, also undersized. And so we really just want you to kind of keep that mental image of where the blues and the yellows and the reds are, because we're going to progress to when we would have 800 students in that building, and you'll be able to see what that looks like. Why 800 students? The Massachusetts School Building Authority, when they did our enrollment projections using a 10-year projected average, are saying that our 5-6 school would have about 803 students in it by the year 2032. Currently, we're at 689 students. So fast forward to 802 students, and you can take a look at what has changed in terms of color in that diagram. The gymnasium has gone to red, the cafeteria has gone to red, the server remains red, the library is red. And so on that first slide where I was talking about how we can absorb kids and increase class size to 22, 23, 24, there gets to be a time at which those big common spaces like libraries and cafeterias and gymnasium can no longer sustain, and that's where we're going to be in several years when we get to that 800-student mark. Hence this project. This is a long-term planning project. So now you're going to start to see student numbers and how it really helps us. So the as-built configuration capacity we've already established at the Hopkins School, which is to the far left in the big orange box, is at 628. Currently, our enrollment is 689 students. When we get to a projected of 802, we're in trouble. At the middle school, the current as-configured capacity of that building is 1,116. We only have 970 students in that building, and so you feel like there's some, some wiggle room there, and there is. But the projected enrollment takes us out to 1,198 students. And then at the high school, our current capacity is 1,252 students. We're at 1,234, fairly close. And the projected enrollment at Hopkinton High School is 1,498 students. This is where, if we look, we realize that there's going to have to be something that happens to that high school unless there's an area where we can have sort of that pressure valve released. And that's what you see on this slide. As you're looking at the middle school diagram in that center picture in the orange box, you can see where you, grade six will vacate, and this is just a drawing so that you can see unused space. It doesn't say that that's where high school students would go, but it shows you how much unused space would be there. In the Hopkins drawing, you can see with the orange-shaded rectangle, that's the proposed addition before you tonight. So the needed capacity at Hopkins School is 174 students, and that addition will accommodate that. If we reduce the projected enrollment at the middle school to 795 students, and we're reducing that number to 795 because we're imagining that grade six has left the building and has moved into Hopkins with grade five, now there's an available capacity in the middle school of 321 students. And when you look at the high school, the difference between the projected enrollment and the configured capacity, capacity is 246 students, that's where your savings is. The high school students, 246 of them projected, would be able to move into that space at the middle school, the available space for 321 students. And that's why this serves moving upstream. That's why it gives us some kind of projection into the future so that this not immediate expenditure is going forward. How long have we been working on this? In July of 2023, we started to have meetings at the administrative level to understand how the education and the curricular differences are going to impact this addition. So we began to meet with some of our educators from the Hopkins School and the middle school to say, what will really be necessary to make sure that when we go from a 4-5 school to a 5-6 school, we are able to meet the curricular and developmental needs of those children? In the fall of 2023, for schematic design to understand and provide needs, we had that information from those meetings to help us with initial estimates. In the winter of '23 and '24, we did the same thing. We met with teachers and administrators again. We've made eight presentations to the School Committee between October and April. We've held three public forums. We've had meetings with Hopkinton's Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Public Safety, and Building Department. We've really done our due diligence going forward with this particular project to ensure that space and educational needs are met. What you're seeing on the screen right now is just sort of that aerial view. You can see that the parking in the front of the building on that, the top of your slide, has increased. We'll be moving from 87 parking spaces at that facility to 134 parking spaces. The renovation area, which is the current Hopkins, is clearly delineated, and that new addition is also added for you. Parent drop-off will not change. It will be at the front of the building. Bus dismissal and, and drop-off are also at the back of the building, just as they are today. We've added in a playfield. There's a half-basketball court, play structures, and a hardscape. There's also a walking path, because we've learned from our physical education teachers and teachers in the building that students like to be outside, walking and chatting at this particular age. So we've done a lot of work to design, design the building inside and out. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Rothermick in just a moment so she can help you see the construction planned as well as the costs. When she starts to describe these things to you, you're going to see that this color coding is important. It talks about the types of classrooms that you're going to see. Anything that is to the right of your dashed line is the existing building. Anything to the left is part of the addition. You'll get to see the first-floor plan, which I'm showing you now, as well as the second-floor plan. And now I will hand it over to Mrs. Rothermick, who can talk about the construction and financing of this project. Thank you.
So as you can see, we'll walk through basically the addition and the renovation. What we're looking at here is the addition, so this is all new construction. In the blue are the 10 regular education classrooms, and that will include the four modular classrooms. In purple are three special education classrooms. In green is an art classroom. The yellow represents the regulation-sized gym and a multipurpose gym. OTPT space is near the gym in purple. The brown represents the restrooms and mechanicals. All the mechanicals in the new addition will be electric, and the site work will include increased parking, reconfigured parent drop-off, and play areas for the students. I think you're gone. Go one more, please? Thank you. So the renovations in the existing building, again, in the blue on one side are new, two new science rooms. There's four in total, two on the first floor, two on the second. In green is a new STE room, that's Science, Technology, and Engineering. And also in blue is a new ESOL classroom. In purple are four small group rooms. There are six total. In purple also is a new team chair office and meeting room. The green is the existing cafeteria, which will be converted to a music suite for general music, band, chorus, and orchestra. The gym in the yellow will be converted to the new cafeteria and stage. In brown is the expanded kitchen servery. In pink is a new expanded nurses' suite, and also the expanded administration suite with a secure entry. And again, in more brown is the expanded custodial, maintenance, and receiving. With the kitchen, all the kitchen mechanicals will be electric, and the end-of-life replace, end-of-life mechanicals within the building will also be replaced with electric, and there will be code upgrades throughout. And that's the first floor.
You've got one more minute, so do you want to jump to where you can get to? And then we'll be able to answer questions with additional slides. Can you, can you get to a point that you can wrap up and engage a conversation? How much? We, we agreed on 15 minutes, and that's a long time. I think if you can, if you can get to a place where people can start asking questions, and Megan, can you give her one more minute, please?
Okay, so we'll jump, jump into cost. What we did is look to the market for also addition and renovation projects to see where we compare, and you can see the Hopkins Project at the bottom, and this is looking at the blend of a new and a renovation, and Hopkins has a $390 per square foot, which is the lowest of the projects you see there. So looking at the total project budget, last year's town meeting allocated $3 million for the design phase that we are in now. At 60% design as we are now, the construction cost is $41,434,000, and then soft costs of $7.9 million. The total project budget without the modular relocation is $52,400,000. The current projects, the School Committee is also very conscious of the, their budgets. So these are projects that came in under the budget. The high school addition came in under $465,000, a roof replacement, the Marathon addition, the Elmwood feasibility study. So all these projects that came in under budget are appropriations that we're looking to reauthorize towards this project.
Okay, why don't we?
Why don't we, I don't know what slide you want to have be the last slide? Yep, this is it. Is this the last slide for this?
Yep. So the remaining project budget funds that are needed is the $48,550,000. The reallocation of projects that came in under the appropriation of $1.6 million. The new debt funding request is $46 million. And just to also remind, this project will qualify for IRA and MassSave energy rebates in the range of $1.3 million and $2 million.
Okay. Thank you. So you can certainly come back to slides to answer questions as they arise. Do, are there any questions? Oh, sorry, before I do that, I do need to check the select board.
Select board recommends approval.
Appropriations.
Appropriations recommends approval.
Okay. Are you there for CIC?
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Could you say your recommendation first?
So unfortunately, before I recommend and tell you what CIC did, we did originally recommend this. However, there has been, as noted by the school department, an adjustment. So I have a question for town council. My own notes from when this was presented do not match the dollar value presented here. Based on the change and removal of the $700,000 and the movement into this article, I'd like to assert that this did not come back before capital improvements for review as required by bylaw. I would like to ask town council if it is legal for us to vote on this.
Okay. Town council.
The, Chris Brown, town council, the amount that's being requested is still the same as it was in the warrant. So I'm a little confused about your question.
My question is, when this came before CIC in November, it quite obviously could not have reflected the plan we are seeing here based on the last-minute nature of the change, which means there was a fundamental alteration to the plan that was approved by CIC, and it did not come back to my committee. So I'd ask again, as required by town bylaw, and as you noted earlier when you took away my ability to approve on '18, expenditure of money requires an endorsement by CIC. CIC was not sought for an endorsement.
The project was presented to the CIC for a recommendation.
Not as presented to the warrant. All other committees come back before us when adjustments are made to numbers shown before us.
The project was presented to the committee, so in my view, it can be voted upon by the meeting, but they can take that into consideration.
Remember, please come through me. Yep.
Okay. So Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis Road, as me and as CIC, I suppose. So one, can't help but feel as though our committee has been circumvented, and that that isn't the intention of our committee. I can appreciate the legal ease there, but when every other department comes back before us, when there is an alteration to what is proposed, it tells us that we're not considered part of the process. And given our role in representing a necessary aspect of town fiscal oversight, I'd like to see that change. As a general comment, and I know it's going to shock you to hear a positive, I think it's incredible the work that they've done to get this under cost. I have two questions. One, how did we have a threefold increase, and would the original $700,000 HVAC have met need while not being as acknowledged green? I understand it's not as green. I want to know if it would have met functionality.
Before you go back, I just want to make sure I'm understa, I mean, some of the things you said were statements, but I think there was some question. One of them was about meeting green requirements?
My question was essentially, there was an original $700,000 for HVAC. It's now 2.6. That's ostensibly a fourfold increase. I understand that the new one is significantly greener by the school's presentation. My question is simple. Would the initial $700,000 HVAC have met needs and code?
Okay, thank, okay, thank you. So I don't know if that would be you. Yeah. Okay.
So the 2.6 represents the HVAC also for the addition, which includes a geothermal well field, and then there is reach into the building. The, when they do the renovation of the existing gym and converting that to the new cafeteria, there is a unit there that would have been replaced as part of the renovation, not part of, and then that was one of the units that would have been part of our long-term plan. So it's kind of spidering across, so the 2.6 million is not duplication of the 700. The 700 is a piece of that.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead.
Mary Arnot, 51 Teresa Road. I agree that presentations are excellent, all of them tonight. Thank you. Since this is all driven by student enrollment, I have a question regarding school choice in Massachusetts, and do we have students in Hopkinton school, all schools that are under school choice, and if so, how many? Through you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The school committee is required by law to vote annually whether or not to accept students from other communities through school choice, and in my time in Hopkinton, they have always voted not to do that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, Barry Rosenbloom, 10 Briar Cliff Drive. Through you, Madam Moderator. I was thinking of the projections that I heard tonight for the student count, and relationship to Article 39 with the MBTA community zoning by law. Would the MSBA forecast that kind of a build-out in your projections, or does that potentially cause a future problem that we're in the next three to five years?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So the enrollment projections that were done by the MSBA were done before the MBTA regulations were put in place. So the enrollment projections that you see before us do not take that into account.
Okay.
That said, I know that Article 39, I believe you said, is looking to set aside land. It doesn't necessarily mean a build-out, and a build-out would be another story.
Thank you. We're not covering that right now, so just, if you don't mind just answering, it doesn't include it. Go ahead.
John Cutino, 1 David Joseph Road. I just have a basic funding question. Now, we were just going over all the free cash and everything, and we talked about this just now, the savings that this school department did, and it's 1.648. Shouldn't that money have gone back into free cash, and then we pull it out? Or does the school committee keep their free cash for their free cash projects? Or does, are we just one town, one budget like we were originally voting on? Just a basic question.
Is that a question for you, Mike? Maybe?
Yes, so I can answer that. So essentially, in the motion is to reuse these funds, so that is what is part of this motion. So that's what we're voting on, to use them.
And thank you. Go ahead.
Jeff Rowland, speaking as Chair of the Sustainable Green Committee. The Sustainable Green Committee recommends approval, as we believe that the school committee and school department have made the most sustainable choices with this plan. This includes limiting the number of construction projects required to meet space needs and aiming for all-electric construction rather than the usage of more fossil fuels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Matina, 40 Eastview Road. Some of you might remember that last fall, I brought the same point up. I'm going to reiterate it before the vote takes place on this with a little bit of data. The Donahue Institute at UMass, which looks at state projections of, actually, the whole country projections, demographic projections, has a certain category that lists the number of single building, single-family building permits issued by town throughout the whole Commonwealth. Hopkinton's in 2022 was 72. The next closest one, that was the highest in all of Middlesex County. The second closest to us was Lexington with 71. However, you got to look closely at this. Hopkinton only reported the first nine months of the year, '22. Lexington reported all 12 months. So we are above and beyond, and we just keep building. We just keep building, and it's got to stop. At some point, we've got to rein this in, or we're going to be spending money, you know, five months later, we're being asked to spend another $50 million, which is needed. I recognize that, but we've got to look at the big picture. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. No clapping, please. Please don't clap. Hi.
Hi, Tracy Martalata, 11 Bridle Path. Perhaps a little bit different than the last speaker there. I have a first and a fifth grader, so have a vested interest in this project. However, I still question the timing of the vote right now. Per the MSBA numbers for FY '24 and the published DUCI enrollment, we are behind projected K-12 enrollment, almost 200 children. Two-thirds of this miss is due to lower-than-projected K-5 enrollment. According to MSBA, the district will increase by over 400 students next year compared to around 30 this year. This is an impossibility. Looking at our current first graders, who will be the first class to enter the renovated Hopkins School and will be there for four, five, and six when the school flips, MSBA projected this class to be 375 students this year, yet they're just over 300 at 302. Next year, MSBA puts them at 406 in second grade, 436 in third, entering Hopkins fourth at, in fourth at 461 students, and leaving sixth at 501. This class would have to grow over 50% in three years to meet projections upon entering a larger Hopkins in grade four. This is unrealistic, if not impossible, and not supported by the facts of enrollment growth or history, even in peak development years. In fact, not a single K-5 grade met the MSBA projection this year, and the current kindergarten class is even smaller this year than the K-class last year. So are we still using the numbers when considering such an expensive renovation? I don't doubt that more space may be necessary, however, based on the actual K-5 enrollment numbers significantly lagging MSBA projections, it seems that perhaps a prudent approach might be to wait a year or two and see what percent of this projected growth will materialize given the decrease in building in town. This will allow for a better understanding of space requirements for an addition in the future versus opening a building that may have empty space and adding significant costs to taxpayers in capital and operating costs on the heels of the cost of Charleswood Project. Also, I'd like to recommend this be done with additional community members similar to the ESBC project.
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand, did you have a question, or was that a statement?
No, it was a statement.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other, are there any, are there any other questions or statements that people in the audience would like to make?
Mike Shepherd, 11 Hill Street. I was on the original building committee of Hopkins School, and I really want to apologize that we didn't build it big enough. We're in a community that has, you know, ponds, stone walls, parks, hiking trails, outstanding schools. All this comes with a cost, and it also contributes to why people want to be here. The thing of it is, is, you know, as you all know, your homes have increased in value. When I was in the building company a year ago, we had a young couple come on Hayden Rose Street, bought a house for $400,000, worked on it for six months, and it just goes sold for $1.6 million, right straight across the street from the high school. So the fact remains that people want to be here, and, you know, we just have to deal with that. The school department has done a great job. The school committee has done a great job, and I just wish we built Hopkins bigger 25 years ago, but we had no idea. So I stand in support of the school committee's article, and I hope the rest of you do as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David Arthur.
Sorry, go ahead.
David Arthur, 36 Falcon Ridge Drive.
Yeah.
I just want to say that new homes being built is not the only factor. As people move out and new families move in, more children come. I'm father of five, pardon me, four, that I know. One is in fifth grade now, and three others. Have a good night.
Okay. Hi, go ahead.
Al Rogers, 4 Laurel Lev. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee. In 2016 or 2015, I believe, CPC funded a pavilion that is on the field near the playground, and in the plan there, it shows that that's going to be parking. I was just wondering what's going to happen with that pavilion.
Do you know? Sure.
Any of the outdoor elements that can be preserved, we could preserve and relocate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Steve Popkus, 24 Cedar Street Extension. I was very intrigued by the previous speaker's student enrollment numbers. I would really like the student, the school committee to respond to them.
Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Can you please bring back up the slide that has the MSBA predictions? Thank you. So this is a slide that I think frequently confuses people. As you take a look at this column right here, what this column is doing is projecting live births in Hopkinton. You have those things. This is what our demographers do. You have those numbers for years that have already gone by, but you don't have those numbers into the future. You also have five-year cohort survival rates that go across the top. So these numbers in the center of this are what we call billed numbers, and the numbers that we're using are really only down here in this bottom row. These are the ones that show you a 10-year projected average. And so if we pull out numbers from this center and we say, oh, in the year 2027, fourth grade should be at 461 students, that is not an accurate reading of this data. When we get to 2032, it's projected that there should be just under 5,000 students, 4,975. And then these numbers at the bottom here represent the class sizes in that particular
Are there, are there any other questions? I see one. I see two. I see three. Yep. Go ahead.
Darlene Hayes, 1 Third Road.
Could you bring the mic down a little?
Darlene Hayes, 1 Third Road. I was going to move the question, and Bruins 3, 1 at the end of the second.
Okay. So what it means when the question is moved is that there would be no further discussion? Did you have something that you wanted to say that hadn't been said yet tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to make.
I'll just be like 10 seconds.
Okay, please introduce yourself.
Chris Van Duzen, 8 Benson Road. I've got two high schoolers, so I'm on the other side of this equation. It's a Sisyphean task to keep up with this. Some people are saying less, some people are saying more. The school has done a fantastic job and are living within their means, so I support this measure.
Thank you. Okay. So I, because you've spoken, I'm going, sorry. Yes. Is there a second to end debate? So that's, okay, there's a second.
You already threw one extra person opposing the motion. Why can't I hear the other?
I'm the moderator here, and I make that call. We're going to take a vote now to end discussion? Is it some form of, okay? It requires two-thirds saying yes. We'll start with a voice vote. Everybody who wants to end debate, please say aye.
Aye.
All who do not want to end debate. Yep, we're going to, we're going to go to the clicker. Okay. If you, if you want to end debate, you will press, yep. Okay. If you want to end debate, you will choose yes. If you don't, you will choose no. If it doesn't matter, then you don't have to vote. Okay. It looks like voting slowed down, so if you haven't voted yet, please cast your last vote. It looks like voting slowed down, so if you haven't voted yet, please cast your last vote. Okay, Nicole, can you close voting, please? It continues, right? Okay. So the motion to stop discussion failed, so, yes.
Tracy Martalata, 11 Bridle Path. I understand what you were saying about the numbers in the middle not necessarily mattering as much as the 10-year projected average. However, I think that if the numbers in the middle are incorrect and inflated, that has a snowball effect to increasing your projected average as well. I guess that's a question, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. Yep. Did you want to answer that one?
Sure. So anytime you have an average, sometimes you have higher numbers, sometimes you have lower numbers. This is the MSBA's best guess at where we're going to be in 10 years. If you think about the 802 number that exists right here between grades 4 and 5, we're at 689 right now. So essentially, we're about 113 students away from that, and we're looking out to the year 2032. So the question is, will 113 students join grades 4 and 5 over the next 8 years? And, you know, none of us has a crystal ball. Our demographers will agree that this is sort of like catching smoke. One of the things that Arthur Wagman would say, and his estimate for the entire district is about 200 students fewer. If you take those 200 students and you divide them up over 13 grades, you're really talking about fewer than 20 students per grade, so that number becomes somewhat negligible.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Hi, Peter Thomas, 215 Pond Street. So, the district relies a lot on the Wagman report, as you're seeing up there, so does the MSBA. But if you cross-reference the Wagman report with data from Vital Statistics and also DESI, the enrollment metrics show that Wagman's forecast actually did not anticipate the COVID-19 boom that Hopkinton residents experienced. So, to put that in context, his report said there would only be 144 births in Hopkinton in 2021. The actual number was 185. So y'all had 40 more kids than you should have had. Okay? And what happens is you start to look down at the cascading effect of that, and essentially, he misses in lots of places and underestimates in lots of other places. For example, the COVID birth rate increased in Hopkinton, which defied the state trend. Wagman underestimated 2021 Hopkinton births by 22%. He also underestimated 2023 pre-K enrollment by 17%. He also underestimated 2022, 2023 K-5 enrollment by 4%, but he overestimated 6 through 12 enrollment by 9%. So, this is a guideline, but you have to know that ultimately it comes down to, "We had a lot more kids." That's really what it comes down to. And so that's what they're trying to deal with.
Thank you.
Brian Douglas, 14 Greenwood Road. Madam Moderator, I would like to backtest the assumptions that we use in these projections. So, I lived in town here for 8 years. Every town meeting I've come to, it seems as if we've always talked about undershooting the- yeah, we've undershot the actual- no, we've overshot what the projections were. And so if we were to look back, let's say, 10 years, going back year over year, how many times have we missed on the projections to the low side? And how many have we missed to the high side? Because it feels like we're always behind what's actually happening.
Okay, so that question is, do we- how far back do we have data? And where do we come down?
Yeah, if we were to look at what these enrollment projections give us, and then what the actuals were in town, were our actuals higher over the last 7 to 10 years, or were they lower?
Okay. Do you have that at your fingertips? You do? Okay.
So I do have that for the past 3 years. In FY '22, we were projected at 4,024. We were at 4,069, 45 students over projection. In FY '23, we were projected at 4,104. We were at 4,206, 102 students over projection. And in FY '24, we were projected to be 4,186. Today, we're at 4,249, which is 63 students over projection. So historically, it's gone 45, 102, and 63 over the projection.
Thank you. Yep.
And whoever's working the slides, if you wanted to put that on the screen, that would be great.
I didn't know you had that slide. Do you know what- do you know where it is?
It's in the back deck, probably 5 or 6 slides into the back deck.
It's a kind of grid. Did you have a page number on that?
It is a grid. You'll go all the way to the questions slide, and then there'll be a blank slide, and then you'll get into our back deck. Keep going.
It's not in this one.
Okay, so you didn't include the back deck.
Okay. sorry about that. Okay, yes, go ahead.
Hi, Sarah Navin, 6 Kalella Farm Road. I am a mother of 3 in town. I have a kindergartner, a 2nd grader, and a 4th grader. I am also the president of the Hopkinton Parent Teacher Organization. I have been through Hopkins. We have an incredible administration, unbelievable teachers. That school is amazing because of all of them. But if you were to go through the school and see how small the areas of learning are, the library is cut in half, the nursing area can barely hold any students, the cafeteria is small. They are over by 50 students already, and that is not the projection. I would really love if you could explain to all of us what would happen if this project does not go through.
Thank you.
So we've been asked this question several times. And in the event that this project doesn't go through and the town chooses to take no action, we have an opportunity to keep 5th as the sole grade at the Hopkins School. But that seems- it seems to be a less-than-useful use of the space because now you've got 1 class in there, but you can't put a 2nd one in there because they don't quite fit. So you've got the 5th grade class in there with a lot of vacated space. The other choice is to say that we could rotate 6th through, which would free up some of the space in the middle school. But that would mean that 1/3 of the 6th graders at any given time would be educated at Hopkins. So you'd be educated at Hopkins and return to the middle school, or you'd be educated at the middle school and go down to Hopkins. So that requires the kids are getting different teachers throughout their 6th grade year. And we have to do it that way because there are related arts that are offered in the middle school that every student would need to have access to. And the related arts physical spaces exist in the middle school. They don't exist right now in the Hopkins School. And so you would have kids transferring school as the school year progressed in trimesters, as the middle school does.
Do you want to try to get the slide that you were on, just to make sure everyone got to see it? Because it looks like they pulled the whole thing up. Do you know what number slide it was? If you can go to Slide 27, please. There we go. Okay. I'm just going to let- so this is the slide that answered that question about the under-over over the past couple of years. So I just want everyone to have a chance to see it. I know you spoke to it. Okay. All right. I think it's your turn.
Hi, I'm Amy Chirco from 147 Lumber Street. Can you please put up the slide with the asterisk on the bottom about potential reimbursement? I think it said like IRA. Oh, wait, it was the one you just passed. Yeah.
The first one?
So every- yeah. We've been here many years. We put 3 kids through all the grades.
You can put up Slide 21, please.
Graduating colleges, fantastic schools. We love it here, we're never leaving. But I remember voting on a lot of schools, and we always had some kind of addition-like reason to build it because we went to the state and we asked for money, and they matched it. And right here, it says like, with the asterisk, "It looks like we're not getting any money, and it's to be determined." And, yes, rebates range from that, but that's all you're telling us. I don't think we're getting any money right now. I'm just wondering, are we? Has anybody promised us money?
All right. Does either one of you want to answer that?
So the Mass Save Energy rebates are- we are able to calculate those. The Inflation Reduction Act, because it is a newer regulation, those costs are more complicated to actually calculate. So that's why we're showing this range of 1.3 to 2 million. So we will be getting rebates, but the exact amount, because of the Inflation Reduction Act is newer, is to be determined. And we're working- I'm sorry?
Hi.
Jerry Kazanjin, 29 Elizabeth Road. I applaud the school department for the creative strategy in shifting classes around, or the grades. My question is, you know, 1 half of the strategy is the work done to Hopkins. The other half was using space here at the middle school for, looks like, high school students. So, going back to something Dr. Kavanaugh was speaking about earlier, about shifting, rotating the 6th grade through, would high school students be rotating through the middle school here to take advantage of that space that is available?
So if high school students were going to be educated in this building, they would have their teacher come here, and it would be the same teacher in the same classroom from September to June, unless, of course, it was a half-year elective. In the 6th grade scenario I described before, a 6th grader might be in Hopkins for the 1st trimester and then go to the middle school for the 2nd and 3rd trimesters. Those would be different teachers because we don't have the ability to pick up all of those teachers' classrooms and move them from building to building to follow the students. Instead, the students would have to move to new teachers as opposed to teachers moving with kids from building to building.
Ashley Fogg, 5 Cross Street. Just to add to what my colleague Sarah said, I am also part of the HPTO, and I am specifically the Hopkins VP. So I am in Hopkins sometimes 5 days a week, every day. And I work directly with the administrators, and I see the kids and I see the classroom. Today alone, I am the memory book coordinator this year as well, and I was in there taking pictures of especially the specialty classes. Hopkins is crowded. It's really, really crowded. And that's not to take away from any of the teachers or the staff or the administrators. They do a really good job. And if I'm honest with you, I don't think the kids even notice. They do that good of a job. But for those that aren't in the building, Dr. Kavanaugh can correct me, but I know at least of 2 5th grade classrooms that are in buildings and in classrooms without windows. Yes, they leave for their art class or their cafeteria, their recess time, but their main instruction most of the day is in classrooms without windows. I know, I don't want my kid in that classroom. You probably don't either. The teachers do a really good job. They have beautiful murals on the wall and all that. But it's crowded. Cafeteria is crowded. It takes about, you know, all 4 lunches start at 10:50, and I think the last one ends at 1:30, and it is just a cycle through. It takes some kids 15 minutes to get through the line, just to get their lunch. Then they have 10 minutes to eat. I mean, we are at crunch time. Both principals are sharing an office right now, and they're trying to add a 3rd assistant principal. I don't know if 3 are going to share, or if they're going to figure out another way about that, but we are administrators, are sharing office space. So I know that the 48 million is a huge pill to swallow when we just approved Elmwood. I get it. I am a single-income house, and I understand that. But we have to approve the school because we don't have the space anymore, and it's crunch time.
Thank you.
Hi, Rob Benson, 178 Spring Street. So, I've lived in Hopkins a long time. I graduated high school on that stage. I used to play basketball in that gym. When I graduated, kids would leave Hopkinton to go to other schools through school choice in 1992. Now, the schools are so good, we can't even accept kids because everybody would flock to the schools. So, point number 1, 100 times out of 100 times, I would vote to support the schools. Never would I vote not to. Point number 2, from a ROI perspective, everybody's property values has increased dramatically over the past, I don't know, I've lived here a long time, so over my lifespan, a long time, it's increased dramatically. But think about the ROI. You're talking about incremental tax increase versus your property values. Having Hopkins in number 1 or 2 in the state at public schools, your home will far outweigh any incremental tax basis. It means your home value will increase at such a rate that the incremental tax increases you'll get year over year is nothing. This is easy. Make the right choice.
John Graziano, 8 Kimball Road. I am currently Chair of the Charleswood School Building Committee, served on the Marathon School Building Committee, and was a 6-year school committee member. And so I can tell you that when we look at enrollment projections, it has been one of the most frustrating statistics in my life for the past decade. This is the hardest thing to get right, and we can use it only as a guideline. We had a slide up there that showed 3 years. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure I'm not. In the 10 years that I've been paying attention to these, I don't think Hopkinton has ever come in a year that we weren't over the projections. It's 10 years that we have been over the projections every time. So while I agree at some point the leveling off will have to come, I just don't know how we can predict it suddenly. The other thing that I would point out is, having stood up here in the fall talking about the Elmwood replacement, I heard a lot through this process, "When are we going to stop the school construction?" Because it does feel like we've been doing school construction for a number of years. And what I think people need to realize is what the school department and the school committee have done here is heard that question and really effectively answered it. There are space needs at all of the buildings. But by taking advantage of the MSBA reimbursement and adding a grade to the Charleswood School, by getting creative and moving those grades down, we're not going to be looking to expand the middle school. We're not going to be looking to expand the high school. This is $48 million for Hopkins, which is not a small amount of money. But this is $48 million to finish the job of getting our school buildings across the board up to the facility level they need to be to be able to serve this population and continue those exceptional results. So I hope everyone will support this.
Thank you. Hi.
Parker Hap, 3 Ossillo. I can't add anything to the former speaker, so motion to move to question.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so to remind people, we will vote 2/3rds vote. To end the discussion, we'll start with the voice vote. All in favor of ending the discussion, please say aye. All opposed? Okay. So we're going to end the discussion, and now we're going to take a vote on Article 19. This one needs 2/3rds majority. Nicole, we'd like to use a clicker, please. Okay. Do you have the home? Do you have the home? Okay. Okay. So I think that the voting has slowed down a little bit. If you want to vote and you haven't, please go ahead and make your vote. Okay. Then Nicole, we can close the voting, please. So it is 242 yes and 100- So, it is 242 yes and 102 no, including the, um, the person voting from home. So that does pass with the, with the two-thirds majority. Now, I know there's people who came for that. I hope we could just keep going a little bit. We've got a little time, and let's move on to Article 20.
Article 20, Ash Street and Fenton Street Drainage Improvement. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
If, if folks could be as quiet as possible as you're leaving, Mr. Manning, I think you might ne- just need to, I'll repeat that, I'm not sure if folks could hear.
Article 20, Ash Street and Fenton Street Drainage Improvement. We move the motion as written in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriations Committee recommends approval.
Sorry, it's, it's what we're discussing at 11, and since it's only 10:32.
The clock's off by now.
Oh. Okay. Sorry. I, I believe it's 10:32. So, we're gonna, we're gonna keep on going. Sorry about that. So, does, does my, does Mr. Manning need to repeat? Because I know it's hard to get ourselves back. We're on this Article 20, Ash Street and Fenton Street Drainage Improvement? Okay. All right, the Select Board?
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriations Committee recommends approval.
Okay, go ahead. Capital Improvement? Sorry, if you don't mind stepping aside.
Capital recommends approval.
Thank you, okay.
So, this is $500,000 for improve the safety and roadway conditions at Ash Street and Roadways, whether it's drainage or just the condition of the road. And this is a debt exclusion that will require a vote on May 20th, and the proposed debt will be $7 in the peak year for the home, for the average homeowner.
Did you say how many years that was?
I believe that is 15 years.
Thank you. 15, okay. I think there are, you have a presentation, right? Do you wanna see if there are questions? Okay. So, I'd like to give props here to our Director of Public Works. She did a really great job, I think you'll see with these slides, that are very concise, with mostly one slide with a few pictures and a little information, so that, that's great. You, you wanna see if there are questions, as opposed to presenting this? Okay. Did, did you have a question?
Yes, and I think to your point, there's 13 articles that are starting with 20, through the next 13, up to 32, I think it is, are all the DPW projects. So I'm glad there's an opportunity here to get some input from DPW. I think, besides talking about the schools, the infrastructure, especially when it comes to the water and the draining, I said, it's another huge interest, I think, to the entire community. And I would love to see, when I think about these projects individually, with everything that we've talked about in terms of what's happening to the taxes, to what's gonna be happening with how much we're spending this year, I would love, I think there's a need to see DPW conversation that would prioritize these 13, or tell us, give us a vision of where we're going with facilities. Because to have to vote on these individually seems to me to be a dangerous thing. I don't know what the priorities are of this project compared to taking care of PFAS, as of, for instance.
Okay, thank you. I, I think that was a comment. Did, did you want a response?
I guess I would love DPW to tell us of the 13, and I guess, maybe it's a generic question that I don't understand about how we do annual town meetings and how we decide what's an article and what's not, but the school committee has to do a ton of work to try to put together all kinds of projects and give us one budget. I'm thinking, it's like, why isn't there a DPW budget?
Okay, thank you. Do you wanna, do you wanna provide, one of the two of you provide some kind of answer to that? Go ahead, can you introduce yourself? I, I don't know if people have hea- heard you speak before.
I like these, these are all short. Hi, I'm Carrie Reed, I'm the Director of Public Works. Very excited to be here after the school committee, that was fun. So, our projects, we have several master plans. Public Works is funded, capital projects are funded by the General Fund, the Water Enterprise and the Sewer Enterprise, and that's why you'll see some of them separately. We did try to propose them in priority order. If you look at the appropriations report, you'll also see our five-year capital plan, so you can start seeing some of the investment that we're projecting in the future. And several of our master plans are available online, if you really wanna dig into them. It's a lot out there, it's a lot of work, and that's why it's proposed, and possibly appropriations through the moderator can answer some of the questions about the way the funding is presented.
Okay. Mr. Manning, I think each one of these is, becomes its own ballot question, is that right?
Well, a good portion of these are debt exclusions that are on the ballot. Some of them are in the retainment, retainment, retaining earnings for the water and sewer, so each one is different, but we have it, we'll give that information as we go through each article. And the first one, as I said, for this project is $7 for over a 15-year payment schedule.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question about, or something to say about Article 20 here?
Maybe it's just a follow-on comment. Brian Douglas, 14 Greenwood Road. Question and comment. Question is, could you maybe just give us like, 60 seconds on how we prioritize certain road improvement projects over the others? And then, the comment is, I'd love to see Cedar Street Extension included in here somewhere inside of Hill Road, because it's like driving on the surface of the moon when you go down those roads sometimes. Thanks.
All right. Yes, go ahead. All right, so you should be happy, because Cedar Street Extension is planned to be resurfaced next month, or this month, we're in May already. So you should see that soon, and you should see announcements coming out from the Highway Department. So, we prioritize projects, and the reason why that was prioritized, we have a five-year pavement management plan that looks at and evaluates every road in town, every public road, and gives us a rating and some recommendations on what we should do. So, our recommendations are based on that plan, and then based on available funding. So we get funding from the state through the Chapter 90 program. I don't have the exact numbers, because I'm not an accountant, but around $600,000 a year, and then we tried to match it with our operating budget, and then some of these projects you will see are above and beyond that. Drainage projects, typically we use the pavement management for paving, that's what folks wanna see, curb-to-curb paving, sm- smooth roads. The drainage programs, we do have a stormwater master plan, some of these, the flooding, are prioritized separately. We look at what we think is public safety as our number-one priority for drainage. Then we look at corrections, what we have out there, anything that might, from drainage, that might be damaging public property or private property, facilities, buildings, infrastructure. And then we look at stuff that's just kinda inconvenient. We get a lot of calls about wet yards and wet basements, so that's kind of like on the lower end of the list. Hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you. Does, are there any other questions on this Ash Street article? Yes?
Hi, Matt Kizner, 21 Curtis, Beddoes Capital. Just to sort of demystify a little bit, some of the questions you're asking are very much what our committee has oversight of, and they are what we review with Carrie and the other department heads when they come. I would tell you, in the two years I've chaired the committee, we've never had anybody from the public come. I would desperately love to have this conversation with you year-round and help to demystify this process for you. I can tell you that Carrie and the DPW this year were exceptional. The conversations we're having about how they're prioritizing projects, the potential impact to the town, the cost of not doing this work, the average life cycle of the DPW vehicle usually significantly be on what expected life cycle and usage is. This is a department that is doing a lot with the money for the town, and they're doing a lot prospectively, but there is a lot of work to be done. I chaired that committee, and my road hasn't been paved either, so know it's a struggle. But, at the end of the day, it is not a mystical process. We really do have meetings about this, we go through these line items, we have the very discussion you were asking about in terms of how is this paid for? Why this one and why not that one? We would love to have you as part of that conversation, too.
Okay. All right. Well, seeing that there doesn't seem to be any more discussion on Article 20, and because this will drive this ballot question, we will do the, the clicker for voting. Nicole, let me know when we're ready. Can you open the vote, please? Thank you. So I haven't seen that number move for a few seconds, I'll give everyone a couple more. You've got another moment? Please cast your, your click, I guess you'd call it? Yep. Nicole, you may close the voting. So the yes is 209, because the at-home vote was yes, versus 46 no, so this is two-thirds majority, Article 21 passes. Okay, moving to Article 21.
Article 21, roadway and sidewalk improvements, DeCarlo Road, Peppercorn Road, Barbara Road. We move the motion as printed in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Okay.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Okay.
Capital recommends approval.
Essentially, this is the sum of $780,000. This is a tac- an ex- debt exclusion, so, and the, the impact will be $11 in the peak year for a 15-year borrowing. Essentially, this work involves resurfacing, it improves roadway in need of repair, identified by the town's pavement management plan.
I think you have one slide on that, should we put it up? Why don't we put the one slide up and see if there, there are any, are there any questions? Okay.
Hi, Peter Thomas, 215 Pond. This is actually my neighborhood, so that's really cool, but the question is, did DPW do any kind of traffic analysis of this, from a pedestrian standpoint, before they recommended this project? Thank you.
I'll let the DPW speak.
So, the quick answer is no, these aren't traffic or traffic mitigation projects, this is primarily, or actually, it's completely, an infrastructure rehab project. The only thing is that these projects now, we're taking a more integrated approach. Typically, we would just do curb-to-curb paving, this time, we're also looking at what was approved as part of the subdivision, and looking at roads, sidewalks, drainage infrastructure, any other kind of, like, retaining walls, anything like that within the public right-of-way that may need to be replaced.
Thank you. Are there any other, any other questions? So again, because this will, this would go on the ballot, we will do clicker vote. Uh, sorry, okay.
Sorry, through the, through the moderator. I don't think there are sidewalks anywhere else in that part of town, really, like School Street, Pond Street, anywhere in there. John, you're shaking your head. Am I right? So, would these be the first sidewalks in that part of town?
Go ahead.
There are sidewalks that were constructed as part of the subdivision, you're probably talking about connectivity. This is not an assessment of connectivity, there's been previous town meeting discussions about sidewalks. So this is just replacing existing infrastructure that's passed its useful life.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Hi.
Hi, Dan Eversall, 16 Therahites. Quick question, in the special election, we're gonna be reallocating unspent sidewalk budget, why wouldn't we use it for this project to reduce our tax burden?
I don't know, who would answer between the two of you?
Apologies, I forget the amount that was, the article that we want to transfer.
So, so that was from a, the one you're referring to in special town meeting, was from a previous project, and it's being reallocated to Article 1 in the special town meeting. So, this is the method that was chosen to fund this particular article, with a debt exclusion.
Okay. Okay, okay, thank, thank you. Okay, seeing that there are no other comments, we will move to voting, and for these, because they're ballot, we'll use the clickers. Okay, Nicole, please open the vote. If you've not voted, please vote now. Nicole, you may close the voting. So this is 151 yes, 82 no, which includes the at-home. I think I do, I'm doing the math, this, this one does not, what?
Says it at the top. It's red at the top, fails by two-thirds.
Okay, sorry, I'm just looking, okay, so I think everyone sees, I was trying to do the math in my head. All right, so this one fails, so that means it's not on the ballot, right?
Well, it's still gonna be on the ballot, but it's just that it didn't.
Oh, okay. Okay, so the ballot's already printed, I just found out. So this will be on the ballot, but because it failed here, it can't, it can't be passed at, at, at the vote. Okay. Are people up for doing one more? Let's go, let's do Article 22, and then maybe we can finish for the evening. Article 22, Granite Street Culvert Replacement.
Article 22, Granite Street Culvert Replacement. We move the motion as written in the warrant articles and motions document.
The Select Board recommends approval.
Appropriation Committee recommends approval.
Capital recommends approval.
Thank you.
Essentially, this replaces a high-priority culvert to reduce flooding, protected town road and cemetery, and improve ecological restoration. The amount is $850,000. This will be another debt exclusion, which will, the proposed debt is 12 years in the peak year for a 15-year borrowing for the average house.
Could you say that again? I missed the number.
The impact will be $12 in the peak year over a 15-year borrowing for the average homeowner, or the average house.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, here is the one slide for Article 22. Are there any questions or any comments?
Through the moderator, and I bet Carrie knows what my question's going to be.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Ed Harrow, 8 Spring Lane. Is this an open-bottom box culvert, we're going to replace this with?
Why, thanks, Ed. Through the moderator. So this is being designed to best meet stream crossing standards, and that's probably what you're referring to, which improves ecological value in addition to infrastructure improvements. So yes, Ed is our local turtle lover and tree lover. So, the design, actually, if you flip through two more slides, we do have a conceptual design that was funded through a, oh, yeah, next one, next one. Oh, one after that, there you go. Those are the potential options, so they are open bottom. And this was funded through a grant from FEMA, building resilient infrastructure in communities. There's potential to get more grant funding, but as anybody that knows that's driven around, this road probably floods, over tops about three times, four times a year. At least seen it at least twice so far this year. We don't like to drive through flooded roads. And it also is the headwaters of the Charles River, so we have some ecological value and some requirements that we have from the federal government to check that river.
Thank you. Are there, are there any questions or comments? No? Okay. So similarly, because this is on the ballot on May 20th, we will go to a clicker vote. Okay. Please cast your ballots, or click your clicker. I think, I think, the problem is I just said we were gonna be done, so I kind of really have to keep it, I think. Okay. Any last votes? Okay, Nicole, can you please close the ballot? This is 183 yes, 42 no, and I think even with that one vote, it still passes, so. So this passes. Oh, shoot, I didn't write down the number.
One e for your 42.
Okay. So, do I need a motion? No, we don't adjourn.
We're, we're adjourning, we're, you know, we're dissolving the session, motion to dissolve the session, reconvene tomorrow.
To, to return tomorrow, but then we have the special town meeting first.
Yeah, yeah. We're gonna have to.
Okay, so I, I would accept a motion to adjourn until tomorrow. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I just want to remind people that we have a special town meeting inside of town meeting to, tomorrow, so that 7:00, we are starting the special town meeting. And once we finish that, we will resume here. The last thing is, please, I know we really love these clickers, but please don't take them home with you, we need them for tomorrow, so please leave them as you're leaving tonight. Thank you. You knew, you knew that there was gonna be.